Nonprofit organizations supporting them are on the path to ending sexual assault violence. We are choosing peace over violence. Our neighbors are enduring profound harm due to sexual violence. And that's why today, Denim Day is so important. Yesterday, at the L.A. County Board of Supervisors, we approved my motion that was co-authored by Supervisor Kuehl, proclaiming this month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and proclaiming today Denim Day. This proclamation is a recognition of our continued work. We need to wrap around our survivors and provide them with housing, childcare, mental health services, whatever it takes to keep them safe and healthy, no matter what pandemic strikes us. That means our work is not finished and we cannot give up. We stand in solidarity with those who have endured sexual violence. We need to continue to help survivors through their journey and simultaneously work to educate others to prevent and end sexual violence for all of them. This is now true more than ever. The Safer at Home Order is a necessary response in working to protect L.A. County residents. However, there are those who are not safer at home because of sexual violence. And we urge you, por favor, to call 213-626-3396. Or if you're experiencing sexual violence, please seek help. You can even call 211, our county hotline, to get information. Denim Day is a campaign to encourage people to wear denim or jeans, and both sexes can do it, men and women and trans, and fight against those misconceptions of sexual violence. I want to thank again my outstanding friend and colleagues, Patty Giggins, Peace Over Violence, for championing this campaign on behalf of Los Angeles County. And we will work to support survivors through their journey and their work to educate others to end sexual violence. It's time to fight back against misconceptions that surround sexual violence. It's time to believe in the survivors. Thank you very much. Now, I would like to introduce our good friend, a friend of not only ourselves, so I think we've worked with Patty on different occasions, but a friend of women and children across the city, a friend of survivors and a trailblazer, our good friend Patty Giggins, the CEO of Peace Over Violence. Thank you so much. I almost feel like anything that I will say today is redundant because of the leadership and these wonderful spokespeople that we have on behalf of not only Denim Day, but on the issues of the prevention of sexual and domestic violence, stalking, elder abuse, child abuse, all of which unfortunately is still going on within the shelter-at-home and the Safer-at-Home orders that we are all trying to deal with. We want to recognize that this is a pandemic that we are all participating in, but we are not going to forget that there's been an epidemic of sexual and domestic violence for decades, for centuries. But we are making progress. And the pandemic is not going to stop us. I'm so grateful to the leadership of our city and our county. Denim Day started right here 21 years ago, Denim Day in L.A., and it has grown now where millions of people participate. It started as a grassroots campaign. It is now an international campaign. And people are participating even during COVID-19 around the world, virtually and online, because these issues are fundamental. When I talk about where we need to go to remedy our society, to disrupt rape culture and create a culture of compassion and humanity where everyone is included, there's no such thing as marginalized anymore. That's where we have to go. And this concept of solidarity, which is our theme for Denim Day 2020, it's about solidarity among all of us to intervene and prevent sexual and domestic violence, just as it is, we're wearing our masks. We're wearing denim masks today. We will have to do our work moving forward to defeat the virus, but also to change the culture, change the society, so that at some point, that message, there's no excuse and never an invitation to harass, to abuse, to assault, to rape, that we don't need to hear that message anymore. I believe that we will get there someday because of our enlightened leadership and because, like a virus, these better messages are going to defeat the harmful messages. So solidarity is our theme. That means we stand together. We're wearing masks to protect ourselves and each other. That's a community, public health action that we're taking together. We can support survivors by not shaming them when they come forward, by not blaming, by respecting their experience, by changing laws, by having the courts and the juries listen more intently to their truths. We can do this. We've been at it for a while. And I personally, and I know my colleagues here, will not give up until we do it. We stand in solidarity with survivors here in Los Angeles and all over the world. Thank you so much. Let me just say a few words in Spanish. Is there Spanish media here? Okay, let me just say a few words in Spanish if I may. Buenos dias. Estoy muy orgullosa de estar aquí por el sexto año consecutivo en el día de Denim Day en la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Hoy me acompaña la concejal Mónica Rodriguez, la supervisora Gil de Solís, y nuestra amiga Patty Giggins, que es la directora general de la organización Peace Over Violence. En este día nos ponemos pantalones de mezclía para apoyar el movimiento que empezó la organización Peace Over Violence en el caso de justicia en la Corte en 1998. Los jueces de la Corte concluyeron que una víctima que fue violada no había podido haber sido violada porque estaba... tenía pantalones de mezclía ese día y no podría ser violada sin que ella se hubiera quitado los pantalones de mezclía. In concluyeron que en ese caso no fue violencia, pero que ella participó en ese acto sexual. Y estamos aquí como mujeres, como líderes municipales, para asegurarles a todas las víctimas de la violencia doméstica y la violencia sexual, de que estamos aquí para apoyarlos y para seguir luchando contra la injusticia y recordarles a todas las personas de que nunca hay una invitación para ser violada ni para ser víctima de violencia doméstica. Hemos sabido que los casos de personas hablando al teléfono hotline donde pueden agarrar recursos ha incrementado por más de 51% las llamadas en los próximos dos semanas después de que se declaró esta emergencia. Estamos muy preocupados por las personas que están viviendo en violencia porque no tienen ningún otro recurso más que quedarse en casa. Hay que seguir apoyando a estas personas. Y otra vez, recordad al público que nunca hay una invitación para la violencia. Muchísimas gracias. Muchas gracias a la presidenta del consulado aquí en Los Ángeles, también la consulada representante Monica García y también Patty Giggins. Es un placer estar aquí hoy día con ustedes. Pero es un día también bien triste porque sabemos todavía que no salimos de la pandemia del coronavirus. Pero esto no nos va a dejar a no observar el día de la mezclía en el condado de Los Ángeles y aquí también en la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Estamos aquí para apoyar a las víctimas de agresión sexual. La violencia sexual es un problema bien grande en nuestra salud pública. Es una conducta que daña solo a las sobrevivientes sino que también a nuestra sociedad. Ahora podemos ayudar a las víctimas ofrecéndoles una casa, cuidado infantil y servicios de salud mental. Vivir una vida saludable es importante para ellos, ellas y sus familias. Es necesario continuar ayudando a las víctimas y a sus familias. También hay que trabajar para educar a otros para prevenir y poner al fin la violencia sexual. Hoy es el día de apoyar a las víctimas quienes no son víctimas, son sobrevivientes con fuerza y esperanza. Muchísimas gracias. All right. Thank you very much for joining us. We look forward to the vote this morning to declare Denim Day today, Wednesday, April 29th. Thank you.
And welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, April 29th. I'm Neury Martinez, the President of the City Council. With me and councilor essential staff. As permitted under the Governor's Executive Order of March 17, all council members are teleconferencing from remote locations. Also consistent with the Governor's order, all public comments will be taken telephonically. I will announce the recess in case we have technical problems or we lose quorum. So, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blumenfield.
Yeah, I can unmute myself. Now I can't unmute the president.
Bonin.
Bonin, Miss President.
Harris Dawson. Councilmember Harris Dawson.
Yeah.
I'm not, but I know people who...
Present, present. Harris Dawson, present.
Here, here.
Corretts.
Here.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Here. Curtis.
Martinez.
Here.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Ru.
Here.
Wesson.
Wesson, here.
Fifteen members and a quorum, Madam President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes of April 22nd, 2020.
Ms. Rodriguez moves and Mr. Price seconds are next.
Commendatory resolutions.
Mr. Ru moves and Mr. Lee seconds, next.
Madam President, would council like items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order. What's next?
Madam President, there have been requests to hold Items 22, 26, 49, 57, and 77 for amendments. Also, Item 51, there is a request to refer this matter back to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee for further consideration.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. What's next?
Items 1 through 21 are items noticed for public hearing. Items 22 is an item for which a public hearing has been held. Items 23 through 78 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Members, the clerk will go through the roll. When your name is called, please state what items you would like to call special. We have 78 items on today's agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
75 and 77 special, please.
Mr. Blumenfield, can you repeat that one more time?
75 and 77.
Members, I need you to mute yourselves. I can hear all your conversations. Thank you. Mr. Blumenfield calls Item 75 and 77 special. Next member?
Bonin.
No items for me today.
No items. I got a question on 75. Looks like Mr. Blumenfield held that.
Mr. Sidio, do you have any items special on today's agenda?
No, Madam President.
All right, thank you. Next member?
Harris Dawson.
No specials.
Weezer.
No specials.
Corretts.
Item 60, please.
Item 60 for Mr. Corretts, okay. Krikorian.
47 and 48, please.
47 and 48. Lee.
Item 29.
Item 29 for Mr. Lee Martinez.
I have no items, thank you.
O'Farrell.
Items 69, 72, and 73, please.
For Mr. O'Farrell, 69, 72, and 73. Councilmember Price.
Items.
No items for Mr. Price. Next member?
Rodriguez.
No items.
Ru.
Item 50 for an amendment.
Item 50, thank you. Mr. Wesson?
I'm fine.
Okay, members, if you've called any item specials for amending motions, please state those now. If we call your name, please state what that amending motion is now on the record so I can take public comment. Just go through the roll one more time, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Blumenfield.
Okay, now I had amending motions on, but you may have them already in writing, like 26, 57, and 77. Do you need me to go through those? Or because they were in writing, do I not need to go through them?
Yes, if you would please read them into the record for the public.
Okay. So, for Item 26, I move that the council adopt the recommendations in the City Administrative Officers' Report dated April 10, 2020 in lieu of Recommendation 1 through 16 for Item Number 26 on the Agenda relative to retroactive acceptance of the Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act Grants Award from the County of Los Angeles Department to support the Juvenile Reentry Partnership Program. Just mostly a technical amendment. Next, on 57, I move the council to adopt the recommendations in the City's Administrative Officers' Report dated April 16, 2020 in lieu of Recommendations 1 through 23 listed for Item Number 57 on today's Agenda, CF 20-0233, relative to retroactive acceptance of the Fiscal Year 2018, 2019, 2020 Title II Grant Award from the California Board of State and Community Corrections to support Los Angeles Youth Diversion Partnership Programs. For amending motion, Item 77A, I move that request council, the city attorney, to draft an ordinance to amend the code, Los Angeles Municipal Code, Section 49.99.2 as follows. Number 1, add a new subparagraf 49.99.2F, which states, "F, if an owner transmits any written communication to a tenant regarding alleged non-payment of rent, breach of lease obligation, or any other indication that the owner intends to evict a tenant, including but not limited to a three-day notice to quit, the owner must include with that communication a notice in the form prescribed by the Housing Community Investment Department, H-Cid LA, and in the primary language used by the tenant, if available. The H-Cid LA notice shall be written in plain concise language to inform tenants of their rights, including any closure of courts to eviction proceedings and the provisions of Subsection A, and shall include the City of Los Angeles seal and the H-Cid LA logo." Point 2, delete the second sentence of Subparagraph 49.99.2E and add a new Subparagraph 49.99.2G that includes a penalty provision sufficient to deter violations modeled after penalty provisions in analogous city ordinances or state statutes. And that was submitted in writing and should be available as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Next member, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, is there a second to Mr. Blumenfield's amendments?
Second it.
Mr. Bonin will second that. Let's move on to the next member.
I had no amendments.
Thank you. Buscaino?
No amendments.
Thank you. Sidio?
No amendments.
No amendments.
Weezer?
No amendments.
No amendments.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Items 47 and 48, taken together, are motions that would expedite the procurement process during times of emergency by delegating certain authorities to general managers for essential contracts. I'd like to ask that both of these items be amended to include an instruction to the city attorney to add an urgency clause in the requested ordinances.
I will second that. Any others, just 47 and 48?
Nope, that's it. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. I will second those amendments, Madam Clerk.
Next is Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make it Item Number 29 and to ask my colleagues to strike Subsection 2 of Section 200.32 of the Right Recall Ordinance.
Can you explain that amendment?
Yeah, so this, you know, now more than ever, this is the time to give flexibility to the hospitality industry. And this Subsection 2 is extremely vague in that it states that a worker can be qualified, they may need to be hired, that a worker can be qualified in a position with the same training body to a new worker hired in that position. You know, more than, I mean, do you want me to make my arguments now, Madam President?
No, I just need you to read into the record your amending motion.
It's just to strike Subsection 2 of Section 200.32.
All right, thanks.
Is there a second to Mr. Lee's amendment?
I'd like to, I would second it just for further conversation and hear the argument.
Next is Council President Martinez.
No, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
No amendments, thank you.
Councilmember Price.
No amendments.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Hi, we're working on amendments for Item 49.
Okay, let's go ahead and hold Item 49 on the desk.
Next would be Councilmember Ru.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, I sent an email to the clerk, but you still want me to read the amendment in? It's pretty long.
Yes, I need you to read the amendment. What item?
Item Number 50.
Okay, go ahead.
Arts Development Fund. It's trying to return the item back to the original intent of my motion.
Okay, go ahead and read it, sir.
Okay. I move to amend Item 50 on today's council agenda related to arts development fee funds for Council District 4 and the ADF Expenditure Plan and Fee Status Report for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Note and file the report from the Department of Cultural Affairs and Related Attachment dated April 23, 2020. Two, approve the reallocation of $368,810.64 in Council District 4 Arts Development Fee from the art project commitment and associated findings identified in Fiscal Year 1920 ADF Expenditure Plan and Fee Status Report to new Council District 4 project typology titled CD4 COVID-19 Emergency Response Program. Three, approve the reallocation of $181,653 in Council District 4 Arts Development Fees from the art project commitment and associated findings identified in Fiscal Year 1920 ADF Expenditure Plan and Fee Status Report to a new citywide project typology titled Citywide COVID-19 Emergency Response Program. Instruct the DCA to update the accrued interest in CD4 appropriated accounts within Fund 516 identified for the COVID-19 Emergency Response Program to be used in tandem with the original ADFV collected. Five, authorize the city controller to approve CD4 interest appropriation within Fund 516 recommended by DCA. Six, instruct DCA to update Fiscal Year 1920 cultural grantees contract for services for orgs and artists located in CD4 and Citywide in order to allow them to produce works of art and/or produce arts and cultural services accessible online through the new CD4 and Citywide COVID-19 Emergency Response Programs. Seven, instruct DCA to consult with individual council district offices before modifying the 1920 ADF Expenditure Plan and Fee Status Report and/or reallocating funds in each council district. Eight, instruct DCA to report back within seven days or at the next council meeting, whatever sooner on the structure, administration, and implementation of a small-dollar grant program to assist artists and non-profit art organizations in creating artwork and performances available to the public through a digital format, including a recommended range of average grant size and cap on individual grants, number of grants potential available, and the process intended to first funds equitably to organizations and artists not listed as prequalified contractors. And lastly, instruct DCA to report back within seven days or the next council, whichever sooner with the analysis of any contractor or other applicants that should be given greater consideration due to particular financial hardship, as well as the readiness and capacity of DCA to host these digital submissions. That's all, thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Krikorian. Okay, next member, Madam Clerk?
That would be Councilmember Wesson.
Yeah, Item 22, I move to grant the appeal in part and deny the appeal in part by adding a new condition requiring the applicant to get final approval of the building design from Council District 10 prior to the issuance of any building permits.
Go ahead and second that for Mr. Wesson.
Thank you.
Are there any other amending motions, members, before we move on to public comment? Mr. Blumenfield?
Yeah, I don't know if we need to state it up. I am thinking on 75, asking it to be a report back to get better clarity in terms of the timing. So depending on how the conversation goes, I have an intention to ask for a report back before we move forward with the language on 75. Thing is, there's not a rush on it.
I'll second.
Do you want the report and ordinance back at the same time?
No, we're gonna have a discussion on it, but since we want us to telegraph all the amendments in advance, I have concerns about the timing. I don't understand it. And so I'm gonna ask some questions and then potentially ask, instead of having an ordinance come right back to get a report back on the possible times and why before we move forward with the specific number of months that was put into that proposal. I'm worried about the impacts.
I hear your amendment. I'm gonna go ahead and hold it on the desk for discussion.
Great, thank you.
Any other amending motions, members? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and move forward with public comment. See none? We're now gonna move on to public comment. Madam Clerk, can you please read out the calling information that we've provided on this agenda today?
As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call area code 669-900-6833 and use meeting ID number 459499150 and then press the pound sign. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Let me repeat. Call area code 669-900-6833 and use meeting ID number 459499150 and use meeting ID number four-five-nine-four-nine-nine-one-five-zero and then press the pounds key. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And, um, Mr. City Attorney, do you want to explain the speaking rules to members of the public that wish to speak on any of these items today?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. To members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you would like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you're speaking on an agenda item, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. If you do not immediately and clearly get on topic or against re-off topic, the president will cut you off and you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time and will move to the next speaker. We're going to take sixty minutes total of public comment. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, if you are also listening to the council meeting on your computer or on a speakerphone, please down, turn down the volume of those devices before you start speaking live to the council members, or we will experience feedback. Unfortunately, for people who are, and members of the public who are zooming in and are in the Zoom waiting room, we can't give you the audio of the meeting itself. So I understand that you may be speak, listening on your computer or on your phone. As soon as you hear the president's address you, please immediately stop listening to the meeting on your device and just pay attention to the phone. You're live at the meeting at that point.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Madam Clerk, can you hold item thirty on the desk? And before I open our, open it up to public comment, Mr. Buscaino, I believe you have an announcement or special guest with you?
Well, thank, thank you, Madam President. Now, I've been privileged enough to work alongside our first responders here in the last week and a half, as you know, um, as a reserve officer, and I know I speak on behalf of this entire body. I want to be able to pause and reflect and thank our first responders, our police officers, firefighters, disaster service workers, Aram Sahakian, who is our general manager of emergency service department, and the entire city family for, um, going above and beyond the call of duty in light of this pandemic. And, and just want to recognize all the work that we're doing, that, uh, our first responders are doing, even, including the Unified Homeless Resource Center, um, and just all of our men and women, um, representing us and, and doing their part, uh, in response to this emergency, and the folks behind me who are working. I'm here in a, um, in a, uh, safe, secure, I'm by myself, um, this, this go around without a mask. But, uh, thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to, to speak and, and recognize, uh, our first responders and all who are stepping up in response to this crisis.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. We're gonna go ahead and open our public comment for this morning's agenda. We're gonna start with our first speaker.
Caller, are you there? What's your name? What item would you like to speak on? Hello, can you hear us? What's happening here?
Members, we're having small technical difficulties. Give us just a second.
In opposition to item number sixty-six, the motion seeking to deem collection agencies nonessential and to place a moratorium on debt collection activity within the city of Los Angeles.
Hold on for just a second.
CAC has been in contact with representatives of the council in an attempt to find a solution and with, yes?
Can you please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on?
Uh, yes. Uh, I'm Sean Sur, president of the California Association of Collectors. I'm speaking in opposition to item number sixty-six.
Okay, so you have one minute to speak on that item. Is that the only item you want to speak on?
Yes, uh, Madam President.
Okay.
The motion seeks to deem collection agencies nonessential and to place a moratorium on debt collection activities within the city of Los Angeles. CAC has been in contact with representatives of the city, uh, council in an attempt to find a solution that would install certain protections for residents of the city of Los Angeles while permitting collection agencies which support essential businesses like hospitals, doctors, banks, and lenders that have been permitted to operate to remain in business. Thus far, our suggestions, which include placing a moratorium on new collection lawsuits, new garnishments and levies, prohibiting the seizure of property and deceased collection efforts against affected, uh, consumers, uh, have been ignored. Please consider the unintended consequences of this motion. Professional debt collectors are a resource for the community, and an all-out moratorium on collections would take an important resource away. During the COVID crisis, consumers need assistance and direction on how to pay and dispute a bill. Clarifications concerning the source of the debt and options to develop a payment plan are halting collections.
All right.
The ability to identify potential identity theft.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you very much for calling in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Stuart Waldman. I'd like to speak on, uh, items twenty-nine, thirty-four, and general comment.
Go right ahead. You, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Stuart Waldman, president of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA. Uh, in regards to item twenty-nine, uh, the right to recall and worker retention, uh, we understand that, uh, the council wants to ensure that workers get the opportunity to come back to work, and businesses want that as well. Uh, but there are a couple items in there that we feel will impede businesses getting back up and running. Um, notably, the rebuttable presumption of, uh, guilt on the part of the employer that the employee was fired for non-disciplinary reasons, as well as punitive damages. They will impede, uh, businesses coming back online. They will increase costs, uh, substantially, and there's nothing that, uh, aids employees coming back in those two issues. We also support Councilmember Lee's amendment. We'd like to see stadiums exempted, and we'd like to see hotels with less than two hundred and seventy-five rooms exempted as well.
Did you give an answer?
Stuart Waldman, president of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. Um, on item thirty-four, we support this, uh, street vacation, uh, benefits Cal State Northridge. Uh, I know that is my alma mater, as well as the council president. Uh, and, um, so we support that. And then, uh, in terms of general comment, want to thank all the council members and their staff for all that they're doing, all the essential workers in the city. Uh, it is a hard job and a hard time. We appreciate all that you're doing. Uh, but we would also ask that as we are moving quickly to try and pass measures to help people, um, that we take a step back in the near future to look at whether those actually are helping people, uh, because in many cases, they're not going to be, and they're gonna be impeding, uh, the recovery. So, thank you all.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Uh, it, it, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hello?
What item? Item fifty?
Uh, ma'am, are you speaking to me?
Yes. We can hear you, ma'am.
Okay.
What items do you want to speak on?
Okay, I have been unable to get to the items. They're regarding District Eight and District Four, Councilmen Ru and Councilman Darrell. I have no idea how to get to this, to the, to what you're asking me, the agenda item.
Do you want to speak on any of the items on today's agenda, or do you want to speak on general public topic, comment?
Uh, I, okay, I guess I'll have to speak on general comments because I don't know how to get to your agenda to give you the proper information.
Okay. It's online, ma'am. Um, but go ahead and give her one minute of general public comment. Go ahead.
Right now? Uh, I'm calling in regards, first of all, to, uh, Councilman Ru's not responding to a month of trying to contact him about the homeless in the community, uh, and trying to give input into how you can get the homeless in the Miracle Mile off the street. They are ready to get off the street and nobody is doing anything. I've been trying to, in a very friendly way, to have the councilmen meet with me on the phone, whatever, so that I can give input. I know every name of every, almost every, uh, homeless person and their stories. They all want to get off the street. I don't know why. I have called into the numbers that have been assigned to get people off. Now, the homeless person is supposed to do this, who maybe doesn't have a phone. So I have submitted these things and, uh, on the phone, and they're
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Well, I, it's never been a
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you for calling.
Uh, hello?
Hi, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Pigrin Chachateryan. I'd like to make a general public comment, please.
Okay, you have one minute, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I am an invoice social equity applicant for phase three, round one. Uh, we've been paying for our properties for a long time, and we're running out of money. And I'm here to ask city council today to please act on DCR's suggestion on giving us temporary approval. It'd be a really big help. I, I mean, it was already difficult, but now my staff isn't working either because of COVID-19, and we have these property rents. So please help us get our temporary approvals and let's move things forward. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Pilar Chiavo. I'd like to speak in general comment.
You have one minute, ma'am. Go ahead.
Hi, I live in Council District Twelve. Um, and I, our church operates the, one of the largest, um, food pantries here. We've seen over a four hundred percent increase in demand and gone from feeding a hundred and thirty-five people a week to over a thousand. Um, we have been also serving, um, elderly homebound folks, one woman, elderly woman who was actually eating cat food when we brought her food, um, because that's all she had left in her house. We know that, we also outreach to the homeless, and, um, people desperately want to get into the hotels, and that's not happening quickly enough. We need to cancel rents before more people are homeless. We need to get people into the hotels as quickly as possible, and we need to make sure that there are truly no evictions during this time. Otherwise, our homeless crisis is going to explode. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on item twenty-nine.
You have one minute to speak on item twenty-nine. Do you want to speak in general public comment as well?
Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Marie Rumpf with the Central City Association, and I'd like to make two brief requests regarding the right of recall and worker retention ordinances. First, please consider adding the sunset date of twelve thirty-one twenty. This is important to do since there has been zero analysis of their potential impact of formal outreach to affected businesses. It is also critical to fulfill the legislative intent of these being urgent ordinance is done in response to COVID-19. Second, the definition for commercial business employer should be clarified. It is ambiguous about who is responsible for hiring practices, and we know it must be the direct employer in order to work. We ask that you clarify this language. Thank you for your consideration.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Noel Weiss. I want to speak on item twenty-two and also on general public comment.
Okay, sir, you have one minute for each. Go ahead.
Okay, on item number twenty-two, I understand from Mr. Weston that, uh, he wants to grant the appeal in part, uh, and the, uh, granting of the appeal would allow his office or the Council District Ten to basically approve the design. That is, takes away from the public their rights relative to, uh, uh, having the system work by promoting public hearings, and specifically before the City Planning Commission, on the night, nature of the design. This is a very important historical area and district. It's gotta be preserved, and there's no provision in law giving a, one person in this city, the council office, the right basically to control what happens relative to that historical resource. So I don't think it's lawful what Mr. Weston wants to do, and he should grant the appeal in whole, or the council should grant the appeal in whole. And the council will follow Mr. Weston's lead because that's basically what they do. So, uh, in, as far as item twenty-two is concerned, there's, the, the legal basis does not exist for the CEQA exemption. Um, the city has not followed its rules.
Sir, your time is up on the item. You want to move on to general public comment, please?
Yes, I do.
All right, go ahead. You have one minute.
Fine, thank you. The, uh, council, uh, I, I, I think it would be, uh, both symbolic and substantive here if the council members and the mayor and all of the city officials would share the pain with the rest of the city by basically giving up one-third of their salary, uh, and, uh, donating it or either back to the city or to, um, food banks, uh, particularly in light of the prior general public comment. I think it's really, uh, interesting that you people can lord it over the rest of us, um, but you're not suffering at all. You're still getting your money. And I don't think it's right. Uh, and it, the, the, the city council basically, and the mayor and everybody else, uh, can basically be telling everybody else what to do, um, and suffering no pain. So take one-third off of your salaries, uh, and I think, uh, that would go a long way towards, uh, promoting, uh, some, some respect, uh, by the public, with greater degree of respect. Finally, I think a resolution telling Congress to get back to work is appropriate as well. Um, and, uh, it'd be nice if somebody took the lead on that. Thank you very much.
Please, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Richie Serjenko from Sunrise, L.A. Um, I would like to speak on thirty-seven, sixty-nine, seventy-three, seventy-six, and public comment.
Okay, you have three minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to start with thirty-seven. You guys are talking about not, uh, putting up a star on the Walk of Fame for Dr. Phil in the time of a crisis and a pandemic. Like, what are you guys even doing? And then I'll move on to my next, my next point. It's now May, like, we, we call, or rent is now due in May. We called before April, and we said that people couldn't pay in April. And now we're almost a month later, and rent is still due. You guys have the power to do it, and yet you don't. You say that you don't have the legal authority, but guess what? The city of L.A. gets sued all the time, and the city attorney and Mike Fear have to go into court, and they have to fight that stuff. So it doesn't matter. Why not just pass something that will help people and then make the city attorney go fight it? The, the, having, leaning on the legal authority for saying that you can't do it, do something is so cowardly. Like, you guys are in a position, you guys make two hundred thousand dollars a year. You guys don't know what people are going through. You guys don't know what the struggle people are, are going through. And there's, uh, what, like, seven landlords on, on city council? Korkan, Weston, Corret, Price, Martinez, Ryu, Horas. Why don't you guys recruit yourselves from the votes, man, on tenants' rights? You guys are all landlords. That's why you guys are voting the way you are. You're voting in your class interest as landlords. You're not fooling anyone. So stop what, and then, John Lee, you're under investigation by the FBI. Why don't, why don't you just resign? Because you're an embarrassment.
Caller, you need to get back on the topic, on the agenda items that you asked to speak on.
I'll get back on topic. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Gil, Gil Fidillo and Mitchell Farrell talking all that shit on, on city council meeting. Don't think that organizers and activists don't hear you.
Sir, you can't address any, any individuals on the council. You need to address the body. I need you to get back on the topic.
Okay, back on top, back on topic. If you guys on city council think that the protests are bad now and they're loud now, just wait to see what happens when you guys try to allow
All right, thank you, sir. You're not on topic. Thank you. Thank you for calling in.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name's Kevin. I'm a member of Sunrise LA and LA Tenants Union. I'd like to speak on Item Number Seventy-Three and general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute for your, for your item and then one minute of general public comment. Go ahead.
Great. Um, I'd like, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Great. Um, Item Seventy-Three, uh, this is Mitchell Farrell's, uh, motion to provide a paltry amount of, uh, tenant protections. Um, the idea that we should, uh, delay people's rent and, and have a, a moratorium on rent with, uh, having to pay that back at the end of this crisis is absurd. Nobody's going to be able to pay back rent, uh, if they've been out of a job for so long, if they've been unable to afford rent even during normal conditions. This is such a rent burdened city. How are people supposed to pay back rent? Um, I, I, I object to the notion of mom and pop owners. Mitchell Farrell, your district is 87% renters. Why do you stand for landlords when most of your district is renters? You assume the worst in tenants and the best in landlords. All it takes is one bad landlord to ruin many households' lives. One bad household does not ruin that one landlord.
Sir, I, you need, your one minute for your item is up. You want to speak? I'm going to give you another minute for your general public comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, my general comment is that the city council has not acted in, uh, the public's interest. Uh, y'all should be ashamed of yourselves, honestly. There's been, this crisis has been going on for a month and a half now and you haven't, uh, done anything to protect tenants. Nothing substantive has happened. Uh, other cities have managed to get this together. Y'all can barely even get a Zoom call going, uh, adequately. Um, there's been, all this time you had to, you know, put together an actual package that benefits tenants. Other cities have done it. Look at what San Francisco's eviction protection has done. Uh, look at what San Jose has done. Uh, y'all just making excuses, pointing fingers, pretending you don't have the legal authority. When you do, you act out of legal authority all the time anyway. You get sued all the time anyway, like the caller before me was stating. And yet you're pretending that you can't protect tenants because half of you are landlords. So yeah, y'all should recuse yourselves because you're not actually acting in tenants' interests because it's not...
Thank you, sir.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name's Rob Vaughn. I wanted to speak on Items Fifty-eight, Sixty-nine and general public comment.
Okay, you have two minutes for your agenda items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, as far as Item Fifty-eight, that deals with the city's fiscal health and I, I think it's worth noting that, um, despite a push three years ago to get our city to clean up its investment policy, uh, we, we took no steps to encourage good investments or, uh, discourage bad investments, uh, with regard to social responsibility or the environment. And, uh, we have $435 million invested in ExxonMobil. Um, it's something that was, uh, appearing like a dinosaur years ago and, uh, has lost half its value since January and lost two-thirds of its value since 2017. Um, this item also relates to the, uh, Budget and Finance Committee meetings and, and the schedule and process there. And I think it's really sad that apparently we're going to have potentially just one day of public hearings on our budget. Um, I, I've said to the committee before, I thought they and that process offered the best policy discussion in this city, um, actually looking at how policy is executed and, and really checking in with all of the departments, with the neighborhood budget advocates, and actually discussing how we get things done. Um, really, this avoids, uh, public scrutiny of those labor contracts that were passed in the fall that are, uh, preventing us from doing anything for the public good. It limits any discussion of LAPD spending, LA Fire Department spending, and it prevents any discussion of our drop retirement program, which is not and hasn't ever been deficit-neutral as our previous C E, CAO said. And, uh, frankly, I think that's something we need to reevaluate right now and in the drop retirement program. Uh, Item Sixty-nine relates to education on renters' rights, which is great, but knowing your rights is only part of the battle. Uh, we need to be, we need people to be empowered to enforce their rights, which requires a fully funded tenant's right to counsel. Uh, closing things on my general public comment, let's commandeer some fucking hotels. Uh, I, I, it's just absolutely baffling how this city prioritizes things. Um, we've had, had two big construction goals over the last decade or so. Uh, one of them being building 8,000 hotels near the convention center. Um, many of those hotels being subsidized, subsidized by taxpayer funds and building 10,000 units of supportive housing. Um, I'll let you guess which one of those goals we've met and which one of those goals we're going to fall well short on. Uh, that's the latter. Um, I, I think this is just something where the city needs to step up. Uh, you need to stop deferring to the mayor on this. Um, I, I'd also like to note that last meeting, there were a number of commenters that spoke in Spanish and did not have their comments translated. This is a violation of the Brown Act. Uh, they were also not told that they had a right to, uh, twice the amount of time. This is something provided in the Brown Act, AB 1787. Um, it's also worth noting that the agenda and our council rules don't speak to translation policies. Um, this is something that needs to be rectified. Our city has always struggled with language justice. And lastly, I think it's, uh, a little ridiculous to see our council president blocking people like the LA Tenants Union on Twitter. Um, are we going to really waste our city attorney's time by having them defend this city in court on something that is clearly outlined in current case law as being not allowed?
Thank you, Rob. Your time is up.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, good morning. My name is Patricia Lopez and I would like to speak on Item Number Sixty-Six.
Okay, go ahead. You have one minute on that, on that item. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, President Martinez. So again, my name is Patricia Lopez. I am the Vice President of Operations of USCB, a debt collection agency with offices in Los Angeles, California. I'm speaking in opposition to Item Sixty-Six, which would deem debt collection as non-essential business. USCB employs residents of Los Angeles and USCB supports the operations of essential businesses within the city, including hospitals. One of our largest partner is the Los Angeles County Healthcare System, uh, basically the frontline on diagnosing and treating the COVID-19 virus, as well as other local government agencies who we partner with closely. Shutting down collection agencies will actually hurt many of Los Angeles residents and businesses. Payments will not be processed and credit reporting will not be updated for those making payments. Also, federal law requires collection agencies like us to take certain actions like responding promptly to consumer inquiries, disputes, and sending communication to consumers. This motion would actually prevent collection agencies like USCB from responding to and commi...
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for calling in. Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Gina Viola and I'd like to make public comment, please.
Okay, you have one minute, ma'am. Go ahead.
I am part of the Healthy LA Coalition and I'm calling in to demand that the city take immediate action to protect our most vulnerable neighbors during this crisis. The city needs to acquire hotel and motel rooms to house our most vulnerable and at-risk Angelinos. You had no problem taking over the Biltmore to house the LAPD. You can do this and you need to do it today. Hotel and motel rooms should have been commandeered on Day One of the stay-at-home order. We are now five, six, seven weeks into this and less than 1,000 people have been housed in new hotel rooms. The mayor has already voiced support for this and the council needs to get on board. We need more hotel rooms right away. The city and county are receiving federal stimulus money to be used for COVID-19-related emergencies. There is more than enough coming to cover the cost for the first 90 days of hotel and motel occupancy. The city needs to reprioritize safety and infection protocols that are vital in keeping our...
Thank you, ma'am. Your, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Joseph O'Conne, uh, general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
I'd just like to uplift the Healthy LA demands to support our most vulnerable neighbors. The city needs to acquire 15,000 hotel motel rooms. As the last speaker was saying, it's shameful that we commandeered the Biltmore for cops and we can't house our unhoused neighbors. Two, city and county are receiving federal stimulus money to be used for COVID-19-related emergencies. There is more than enough to cover the cost for the first 90 days of hotel motel occupancy. Need to prioritize safety and infection prot, protocols that are vital in keeping our unhoused and unsheltered neighbors safe during these times. That means supplying dumpsters, showers, hand washing stations that are getting maintenance regularly and are not constantly out of soap, water and paper towels, bathrooms and bathroom access, no sweeps, even though that is continuing for some ungodly reason. Vermin abatement, laundry vouchers and waters, any measures that criminalize poverty and homelessness, which is what this city does really well, should be disbanded during this time. In conclusion, Mitchell Farrell, you're a snake. Show fuck yourself.
Thank you very much, sir. Your time is up.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Uh, my name is... Public.
General public comment. I need you to turn on your TV or your device because we're getting a lot of feedback.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. It's a lot better. What is the item you want to speak on?
Uh, public comment.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Uh, first, I would like to say thank you to our Councilwoman, uh, President Nury Martinez, for her great job that she's doing out in front of the Safranada Valley LGBTQ Community Center. We're really amazed at what you're doing, your hard work, you make sure our community is safe. We would like for you to continue doing that, you're providing those services. Also, if you can talk about a little bit, what's the plan for the LGBTQ month that are coming up on May? You know, I know where our celebration, Pride Month is not going to happen no more. Uh, what's your plan for what the city is going to do at those moments? That's what I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, um, my name is Jacob. I would like to give general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Um, the city needs to commandeer hotels to house people immediately. There are nearly 5,000 luxury hotel rooms in downtown LA that have received public subsidies from the city, from this same city council. And every day that you don't act, there will be blood on your hands because people are going to die in the streets. People are already dying in the streets. Um, the protests at your homes will continue. You should be ashamed of yourself for letting down millions of people in the city who don't own property. Nury Martinez, your reign as city council president so far has been a failure. You have voted again and again against tenant protections, against even the basic Healthy LA demand, um, and you should expect the movement against you to escalate. And you should also expect a lawsuit from myself and from the LA Tenants Union about blocking us on Twitter.
Thank you, sir.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Item Number Twenty-Two, Ann Mitchell.
Only on Item Twenty-Two, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Item Twenty-Two, Ann Mitchell, I urge the LA City Council to accept the whole appeal of the SEQA exemption for 738 South Normandy Avenue. A full review must be performed under SEQA guidelines. A categorical exemption must not be used for a project which may cause a substantial adverse change in the...
Ma'am, are you there?
Excuse me. A full categorical exemption cannot be granted for this historical resource. The proposed building does not meet the Secretary of State's interior standards for new construction. The size and scale of the building is more than we would be allowed under SEQA exemptions. The proposed project jeopardizes the historical significance of the entire street. Please note the comments by Adam Fine, Los Angeles Conservancy, and Noel Weiss, Attorney for Adjacent Property. The council today must allow a full review of the entire appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mommy, are you there? It's Herman Herman, bitch.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
It's Herman Herman, bitch. What's up, niggers? Are you there? Hello? I want to speak. Are you there, nigger?
What item would you like to speak on?
Herman Herman, 40 QRC 1983. Fuck all of you.
You, you need to give me what items you want to speak on.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello?
Yes, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, hi, my name is Matt Yerditsky. I'm an independent restaurant owner. I'd like to speak on general comment. I had emailed Councilman Sadio last week. He didn't reply to me, but he did reply to my business partner. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Um, it's regarding the Restaurant Deliverors, uh, program that the governor launched last week. We, um, just wanted to say, we, we've been catering for several years. We are an independent restaurant. We've been suffering the COVID, um, quarantine and this program is great because it really gives us an opportunity to get back up on our feet. We just wanted to say that we would love to not only be considered as a restaurant, but we'd like to help organize the program if needed. We have a ton of experience in this, in this area and it sounds like you guys have your hands full. So, um, Councilman Sadio, you have my email. Um, feel free to reach out, uh, if you guys did want some help organizing and scheduling different restaurants to arrange meals for the, the seniors. That's it and have a great day.
Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Levon Penosian. I'd like to make a public comment.
Go ahead. You have one minute, sir.
Uh, I'm an invoice social equity applicant and my business is located in Van Nuys, the Nury Martinez District. I'm here today to ask City Council to please put on the agenda, uh, DCR's recommendation to give us temporary approval so we can open up and make money. Um, it's, you know, about time. Uh, that's all. Thank you. Please give us our temporary approvals.
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Armando Flores, Item Twenty-Nine.
What was that item?
Item Twenty-Nine?
Item Twenty-Nine, yes.
Okay, go ahead. You have one minute.
Uh, good morning, Armando Flores with the Valley Initiative Commerce Association, VICA. Uh, VICA, the business community continues to have concerns with the impact the right of recall ordinance would have on businesses, especially at a time when many are struggling to stay alive. This would be a huge blow to the hospitality industry. Uh, in particular, the rebuttable presumption provision would undoubtedly open the door to litigation and create increased costs for business owners. Uh, we would urge you to strike this provision and to strike the provisions regarding punitive damages. It's just overkill. Uh, we would also like to see an exemption for stadiums and for hotels with less than 225 rooms. Uh, these changes would save a number of businesses during this crisis and would reduce the challenges during recovery. Thank you.
Hi, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Uh, general comment. Uh, so I just was trying to sign...
You have one minute. Go ahead.
I was just trying to sign my mom up for the senior meal program that the mayor has set up. Um, and after trying all morning, I finally got through. They told me that she will not qualify even though she's 82 years old, had, just had a stroke and is not allowed to leave her house because of coronavirus, that she doesn't qualify because she get, for 10 meals a week because she gets $16 a month in, in SNAP or CalFresh benefits. That's ridiculous, you know? That's, less that she can get, she gets less money than she could get that amount of meals for. And she's not allowed to leave her house. It's, we live in Oneonta and this is crazy. It needs to be changed so that people who really need the assistance can get it. Thank you.
Please, hi, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
I'm speaking on Item 1217 for public convenience and necessity.
You have one minute on Item Twelve? Go ahead.
Good morning, uh, Council President Nury Martinez. My name is Ariel Gutierrez, CMS LA. Uh, we are requesting your support, uh, for this public convenience and necessity. We are requesting your support for this public convenience and necessity application. We have submitted a package for your review that this, this application has been supported by LA City Planning. 31 conditions has been imposed to mitigate any potential concerns. Secondly, LAPD, the West Valley Captain Ernest Eckridge actually supported this project and imposed 21 conditions to also mitigate any potential concerns. And lastly, 7-Eleven understands and respects the city, and more specifically, the council office, in trying to tackle issues that can be both directly and indirectly attributed to the retail sales of alcohol.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Stuart Rubin, and I'd like to speak on item 22, please.
Okay, go ahead. You have one minute on item 22.
I am a legal counsel for the owners of the apartment building at 732 South Normandy, which is directly adjacent to the subject property. I received recently a 30-day notice to excavate, with excavation to commence on or after May 5th. My comments essentially are that excavation should not be allowed when neighbors are quarantined in their units and that the excavation permit should be revoked. Secondly, I sought information from the developer as to what steps have been taken to protect our 1927 historical building from cracking, breaking, and making the tenants otherwise crazy during underground excavation next door. I was sent a nondisclosure agreement and was told they would send me that information together with insurance information, which I have not yet received. To me, it defies credulity that a city would approve an architecturally discordant and excessive size-wise project on a block which is historically designated and locally recognized as a little New York.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, thank you for taking my comments. 2966 and general public comment.
Okay, you have two minutes on your items.
My name is Brad.
You have two minutes on your items and one minute on your general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm a member of the Healthy LA Coalition. We've been supporting Right of Recall, which is related to item 29. I want to thank the public, the city council for supporting that as well. I have a lot of criticisms of the city council, but on this issue, I definitely agree with what you're doing. Right of Recall is something we should have had from the beginning. There's an old saying, if you stay ready, you don't have to get ready. We should have had Right of Recall already. Where it's better late than ever. For people who maybe don't, are familiar with the issue, Right of Recall allows employees to come back to the jobs they used to have. It's an important union busting tool is that employers will just lay people off once they see a union coming, and then they'll say, oh, we got to start again with a new workforce, and it's new people who don't know each other, who can't unionize, because they're just going to get to know each other. Item 66, debt collection. Is debt collection essential service? I think that the good thing about this crisis is it's forced us to think about what's really essential and what's not. You know, grocery workers used to get no respect. Now people are saying they're heroes. I wish they were paid like heroes, but debt collection, I don't think that's so essential. Ever since ancient times, we've understood the concept that debt needs to be wiped away from time to time. If you look at the Old Testament, it talks about debt jubilee, wiping out debt every 50 years or so. You can look back through histories of ancient Greece, so on, wiped out all the debt. We need to just forget about debt. It's, it's, it's an old concept that needs to be left in the past. Okay, my general public comment, as I mentioned before, I'm part of the Healthy LA Coalition. You've heard a few other commentators mention that. Healthy LA is the largest coalition of tenants unions, labor unions, religious congregations, civic organizations in the country. Please look it up, healthyala.org. Are landlords essential workers? Is rent essential? We're in the middle of a pandemic, and we're in the middle of a de facto rent stray. And so how that.
Hello, are you still there? Seems like we lost that caller. Next speaker.
Hi, what item would you like to speak on? Hello?
Hello?
Yes, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is Charlie Yun. I am in favor of item 22. I, I work in the neighborhood 3580 Wilshire Boulevard. The most important thing is that in the midst of a continuing housing crisis, this project is creating new and affordable apartment units. We need more housing in this neighborhood as soon as possible. I think this project was first approved in December last year before being appealed, so I urge the council to deny the appeal. Thank you.
All right, let's hold public comment for just a second. Mr. Blumenfeld, did you have a comment?
No, I didn't. Sorry, my, hello?
Hi, Mr. Blumenfeld, did you have a comment about one of the callers who needed information?
Sorry, I missed that.
Mr. Blumenfeld, can you hear us?
I was having.
Can you hear us? I, I thought you had a comment regarding one of the callers.
No, I did not. I did not.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to continued public comment.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Andrew Brady, item number 22.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
Thank you. This regards the residential development project in CD 10 at 738 Normandy. There was a public hearing on this project before Plum. Plum appropriately denied the appeal attacking the project, upholding the city's secret analysis, including with respect to its potential impacts on historic resources. The city's analysis is supported by two expert historic reports, so a full environmental analysis was conducted. The project is on a vacant surface parking lot. It was recommended for approval by the neighborhood council, so it does have community support despite the opposition by a small group of local NIMBYs. It brings much needed housing and affordable housing to the city. The construction of housing has been determined essential by the governor and has been allowed to continue due to our dire housing crisis. We support the planning department's approval of the project. Plum's denial of the appeal was plainly correct and should be upheld by the council. Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Nancy Hoffman-Banyek, item 29.
Okay, go ahead. You have one minute to speak on item 29.
Hi, I'm Nancy Hoffman-Banyek, CEO of the Greater San Fernando Valley Chamber of Commerce, and we're an organization that represents businesses and employ over 80,000 workers. We are in opposition of the conditions under the right to recall measure, item number 29. This ordinance would make it impossible to run a business, not just during the public health and economic crisis, but indefinitely. We need the city of Los Angeles to develop policies and programs to support a robust economy by encouraging job creation and opportunities. As an organization that runs a job training program that improves employee quality and retention, we know firsthand that companies do not want to lose their experienced employees but have, but have had to make the difficult decisions during this crisis. This decision should not, should continue to lie in their hands only. When they are able, we know they will want to rehire their former employees, as it is quicker, cheaper to hire back experienced workers and train new ones. As businesses throughout Los Angeles are suffering during this crisis, some of which have already shuttered permanently, the city must act to ensure their survival and not hamper how they run their business instead of imposing burdensome, burdensome rules and regulations that put them at risk for punitive damages, rebuttal presumption, and excessive costs.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me here today.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Karen Jo Goodwin, item 29.
Okay, go ahead. You've got one minute on item 29.
I'm the founder and CEO of Exact Staff, a 100% woman-owned staffing company employing hundreds of people throughout Los Angeles. I'd like you to ask you to consider an amendment to address the unintended consequences to temporary staffing of item 29. We were asked last week to supplement the workforce of a janitorial firm that needs immediate assistance for projects cleaning lockers and storage spaces for individuals experiencing homelessness in LA to store their personal goods in light of the pandemic. The need for staff for this project is immediate to address this workforce requirement, and our firm has hundreds of candidates ready to accept this opportunity. The candidates we have typically prefer temporary work for a variety of reasons. I ask you to consider the unintended consequences of not being able to staff important projects immediately through usage of temporary staffing and amend the right of recall, item 29, accordingly. Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Maria Salinas, item 29.
Go ahead. You have one minute to speak on item 29.
This is Maria Salinas, President and CEO of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. We oppose item 29, the proposed ordinances for a right of recall worker retention, because they're simply bad for restarting the economy. It'll make it harder for businesses to reopen. Constraints to businesses, rebuttable presumptions, and punitive damages are all items that are detrimental to businesses reopening. And it opens the door for litigation. The economy that will emerge once we reopen will not be the same economy of two months ago. That's the reality. We need to provide employers with maximum flexibility to keep the doors open, save jobs, and bring back their workforce. California already has some of the most rigorous employment laws in the country, and layering an additional set of burdensome constraints does not make sense. We urge you to oppose these ordinances because they're simply bad for our economy and its recovery.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello?
Yes, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Patricia Torres Bruno, and I work for the LA Chamber of Commerce. And I'd like to speak on item 29 and 66.
You have two minutes. You have two minutes to speak on both items. Go ahead.
Thank you. As my boss just spoke about item 29, I would like to just discuss the impact that these policies are having on businesses. Businesses are struggling to stay open. A lot of them are completely shut, shut down and not generating any type of, any type of revenue. We need to empower businesses to continue operations and employ Angelinos during this unprecedented crisis, not additional layer, layers of regulation. On the right of recall, we have serious concerns and about right of recall and worker retention ordinances that have detrimental impacts to the business community by establishing the rebuttal presumption if an employee is laid off. Employers could spend up to $35,000 to $50,000 just to defend themselves each time. Having to lay off employees is never an easy decision, but the discretion should be left to the business owner who's desperately trying to remain open. If the council is trying to restore the economy, then support business who are driving the economy and jobs. These, these ordinances only directly impact the delay of jobs by requiring the additional five days to respond to a job offer. We want to restore our economy, and these ordinances do not help in restoring our economy. On item 66, we have concerns about this, we oppose, we're opposed to this item. We support the city council's efforts to help consumers in their financial services marketplace during this difficult time for the country. However, we have serious concerns about the motion to place a complete moratorium on debt collection as there's unintended consequences to consumers from such a broad disposal. Rather than create outright ban on all debt collections, we believe that.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Which may have a dire unintended consequence.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Jacob Eisenberg, I'd like to speak on item 6973 in general.
Okay, you have two minutes on each, two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Hi, thank you all for your time and hard work. I own one duplex and one single retail space. I don't consider myself a landlord. It's a very charged word, people use. I'm not like a lord over the land. The retail business is closed, like most other non-essential. I'm making zero income there, while mortgages, property taxes, insurance, maintenance fees, utilities still come due, which brings up the question of why, you know, like a corporation like Target can still sell T-shirts, but small mom-and-pop businesses can't with proper precautions and rules. The small business that people depend on for food and et cetera need to support themselves. Banks are not working with small property owners. My bank told me I'd have to go completely belly up before getting any form of mortgage relief from them. That's First Foundation Bank. My other tenant, basically, it's $1,000 a month, but then I get an income, but after mortgage, taxes, water bills, et cetera, you know, bills, trash, it's less than $500. And that's my only income. Why should I be sacrificed in this economy, basically? Thank you for letting me speak, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Ally Eads, and.
Okay, what items do you want to speak on?
It's about a building that's being built in a vacant lot in the Mariposa Historic District of Koreatown. I just want to express my concern over the project and how important this area is for not only our local filming, but also the visual integrity of the area as far as history goes and keeping the unique character of that neighborhood. And I just want to encourage everyone to really look at this and push for the developers to get a plan that's approved by everyone, to, to keep the street looking unified, to keep this really special area that we have in our city looking beautiful, and just keep the historical integrity of the area, because there's no reason that we should have something that is just ugly put in an area that's been so special for so long, especially when we have so many people coming there to film and photograph. I feel it's just such an important part of our city, and there's no reason that with a little extra care and a little planning, we can't have something.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Beautiful and functional at the same time.
Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Jaime Garcia with the Hospital Association of Southern California. I'd like to speak on item 29. The ordinance goes beyond the intent of the council motion that was focused on hospitality, airport security, and commercial buildings, where janitors unfortunately have been laid off in large numbers. Hostels are part of the healthcare sector, which is not mentioned in the initial motion. And secondly, hospitals don't employ janitors, but employ environmental service teams that are specialized in infection prevention, as well as engineers and construction workers, not necessarily maintenance in the traditional sense. And security personnel play an important role in protecting hospitals, which are critical infrastructure assets. And so finally, number three, the ordinance presently excludes academic institutions that operate medical centers. And so my question would be is what distinguishes these medical centers from other hospitals in the city of Los Angeles? Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Lyra Kelker, item 75.
Okay, you have two minutes to speak on both items. Go ahead.
Hi, good morning. My name is Lyra Kelker, and I work at an organization called Inclusive Action for the City. We're a commercial property landlord on the east side of Los Angeles. As a landlord, we are doing what we can to help our tenants, including the deferral of rent payment, but not everyone is doing that. We need to be seeking cash assistance for tenants and general debt relief, but in the meantime, we need to be protecting small businesses, and that includes having more time to pay back their rent. If a commercial tenant is unable to pay rent for two months, if they only have three months to pay it back and are making equal back rent payments each month, they're looking at 66% increase in monthly rent for those three months. If it's extended to six months, it equates to a 33% increase. And even better is a much more reasonable 12 months of pay time, which would lead to a 16% increase. All businesses should be given 12 months or longer to pay rent back, especially businesses with less than 50 people. An extended period of back, back pay time is crucial for keeping small businesses afloat at this very precarious moment. As a landlord, we. As a landlord, we want to be helping and protecting these businesses that serve their neighborhoods, and an extended payback period is the least we can do. Thank you.
Members, that was the last speaker, so I'm going to go ahead and close. Public comment on all items, including general public comment. At this time, we're going to go into a 15-minute recess, we'll come back and start voting on items.
Okay, members, we are coming back from our recess. Can we get all the members back, please?
Right, right. Okay.
Okay, members, we're back in session. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bloom Menfield. Councilmember Bloom Menfield.
Yeah, I'm gonna roll call.
Roll call present. Here I am. Hello.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, here.
Sadio.
Eyes are shining.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, present.
Weezer.
Yeah.
Harris Dawson.
Corretts.
I'm here.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee. Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
I'm present.
Price. Councilmember Price.
I'm present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Ru.
Yeah.
Wesson.
Wesson, here.
Fifteen members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and move to item forty-nine for an amendment by Ms. Rodriguez. Ms. Rodriguez, can you read that into the record, please?
Yes, Madam President. I move that council adopt the recommendations in the city administrative officers' reports dated March 4th, 2020, and April 17th, 2020, in lieu of recommendations one through six listed for item forty-nine on today's agenda. Council file eighteen dash zero three nine seven relative to budget modifications, reappropriations, and contracting authorities in connection with the fiscal year 2018 urban areas security initiatives grant.
Okay, seconded. So let's go ahead. I'll go ahead and second Ms. Rodriguez as amended motion. Madam Clerk, what's next? Do you have a hand? Who? Mr. Bloom Menfield, did you have a question?
Just a quick, just a quick thing that I wanted to announce because we had a speaker earlier from Winnetka whose mother was having trouble with the food program, and I just wanted to put out there, I hope she's still listening, to contact my office because we have been putting people in touch with One Gen and other food services. So if she's out there and listening, please call my office at eight one eight seven seven four four three three zero. We really want to help your mother get the food that she needs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Very nice, very nice.
All right, Mr. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, go ahead and...
Would council like to vote on all the items that without amendments, Madam President?
Yes, let's go ahead and do that at this time. Go ahead and read them.
Let me read the items that council can vote on without amendments. Those are items one through twenty-one, twenty-three through twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty-one through forty-six, fifty-two through fifty-six, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty-one through sixty-eight, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-four, seventy-six, and seventy-eight.
Members, do you need us to repeat that one more time before we take a vote? Okay, great. So Madam Clerk, go ahead. Let's open the roll.
Bloom Menfield.
Bloom Menfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson. Harris Dawson.
He's black.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Weezer.
Yes.
Corretts.
Yes.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Ru.
Yes.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fifteen ayes, these items pass.
Okay, Madam Clerk, what's next?
Next, would council like to vote on all the items with amendments?
Let's go ahead and do that. Can you please read into the record those items?
The items with amendments are items twenty-two, twenty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-seven.
We good with all that?
Members, did you get all that? If there aren't any questions, I'm gonna go ahead and ask the clerk to open the roll. Madam Clerk, go open the roll.
Bloom Menfield.
Bloom Menfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sadio. Sadio.
Are you?
Harris Dawson. Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, aye.
Weezer.
Yes.
Corretts.
Corretts, aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Ru.
Yes.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fifteen ayes, these items pass as amended.
Madam Clerk, let's move on to items called special by members. Let's start with item twenty-nine. This was called special by Mr. Lee and seconded by Mr. Buscaino. You wanna go ahead and call the roll? Mr. Lee, do you want to speak on item twenty-nine?
Yes, please. Thank you, Madam President. You know, I understand the need for this legislation. I know that, you know, there's a lot of people out there that were trying to alleviate some fears right now and that, you know, are worried about if their jobs will be there when they, when this crisis is over. You know, our council president has proposed groundbreaking, you know, legislation by protecting employees through the worker retention and recall ordinance. And I support our council president and this important step to protect Angelinos. But one of the items, you know, we've all seen this year's proposed budget and how a loss of the TOT will affect the programs and core services we provide. You know, we're the city of Los Angeles. I'm hoping that tourism bounces, you know, right back and that. But we need, in order for that to happen, we need to give some of these hospitality businesses some flexibility to get back up and running as soon as possible. That's why I'm asking for your support one more time to strike section two hundred point three two subsection A two. You know, as, as Unite Here Local Eleven will tell you, they have a very skilled workforce. I've seen firsthand their culinary training facilities that they have to train new chefs. And, you know, we just need to allow the hospitality industry the ability to follow the right of recall. But the way that is written, you know, if I need my third front desk operator, but the next person with seniority is a chef, I need to offer that person this job. I just don't see how that makes sense. The, the, this, the way that this is written, the subsection, can be qualified for the position with the same training that would be provided to a new worker hired in that position. But in reality, a hotel might be looking for someone who already has that experience in that field already. This subsection is extremely vague and can be interpreted in so many ways. You know, let's not tell businesses how to run their business, you know, so they can get back up and running as soon as possible and provide jobs, you know, to the people of Los Angeles. So that's why I'm asking you to please support this amendment to help businesses to hire quickly and get people back to work. So what we're saying is right now is that if I have a chef and, you know, I need, you know, I need to hire a chef, but other people have seniority, you know, I shouldn't have to, you know, then offer that. I want to get up and running, hire that chef, hire that front desk worker, hire their bellhop, hire that, you know, the house worker. Just some flexibility in making sure that we get it up and running as soon as possible. And that's why I'm asking you to please accept, support this amendment to help businesses hire quickly and get up and running as soon as people and get people back to work. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Corretts?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would just point out I had some of the same concerns. I worked with some of the advocates of this change to... Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay. I, I worked with some of the advocates of, of this particular ordinance to change some of the wording to clarify it, and I have pointed it out at a couple of our meetings that we absolutely do not want to have a restaurant reopen, as an example, and make them retrain their busboys to be waiters when they have waiters with less seniority but on point. And it is rather clear to me at this point with the current wording that if you need to hire a waiter, you don't have to rehire a busboy with more experience. You're able to hire within the categories that exist. So if you have a, a host, you can hire another host. If you have a waiter, you can hire another waiter. You don't have to hire the person with the most seniority in unrelated categories and retrain them. So it seems clear to me that we have handled this. If, if indeed we hadn't, then I, I would agree with you that this change needs to be made. But it is now clear enough to me that what we've all expressed as our intent is, is workable in the ordinance itself. And I don't know if the city attorney wants to speak to that as well, but I, I don't believe that would be the case. I, I also, as long as I'm speaking, I would once again express dismay that the rebuttable presumption is still there because that is an issue that can only be dealt with and clarified in court. We will just be creating litigation that is unnecessary. And I would like to have us at least once again give some further thought to removing this, which I think we gain little by having it there, and we gain potentially some litigation that absolutely is not what we want coming out of, out of this pandemic and reopening our businesses.
Okay, Mr. Sadio? Mr. Sadio? Mr. Sadio, are you there? Do you wish to speak on this item? Okay, I'm gonna move on to Mr. Lee then. Mr. Lee, do you want to speak on this item?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. I just want to ask the city attorney a, a quick question. So that if I have, if I have ten, you know, current front desk operators and only nine answer the bell back to come back and work, do I have to offer that tenth job to someone in a different classification? Or can I hire someone who's been trained as a front desk operator? Or do I need to offer that to the, to the next seniority, senior position?
So I believe Danya Minasian is on the phone or in the Zoom meeting. I believe she can answer you.
Hi, Danya Minasian, Deputy City Attorney. The answer to your question, Councilmember Lee, is that if there are nine... You called them, what did, what was the position you said? Desk?
Just front desk off.
Front desk workers? Front desk workers? Okay. So if there are nine front desk workers that are hired off the list and the list has ten people on it and the tenth person didn't accept the job, is that the...
Correct.
Okay. The tenth person didn't accept the job, then if, if this is a position where you would be hiring someone from the outside that would need training, then it just asks that you go to the list and offer that job to someone else on, on any of the other categories, job classifications, that would be able to have the exact same training or something the outside would have to fulfill that job.
And, and colleagues, I totally agree with that. As long as, but front desk operators have some sort of training, some sort of, you know, pre-training of, to fill those positions. So if it's just a simple, yes, everyone needs to be trained on a new job, you know, have to require some new training. But, you know, if I'm a business and I'm, if I'm a, in hospitality, I wanna hire back somebody. I wanna hire someone who understands that job already. If I have a chef, if I'm hiring a chef, I have to then go to, why, why can't I offer that job? The tenth person didn't answer. Why can't I then not go to a chef to take that job instead? I now have to go down the list and train them to see, to the same training I would have provided any new chef? I mean, yes, every new employee is gonna need, you know, new training. And I understand that, that we're, we're gonna have to have that. But that's what, that's, that's the problem. That's the problem. That's the flexibility. I want these businesses, I wanna get people back to work as I know all of you want to do. And I want them to do it in the, in the, you know, quickest way possible so that they can get revenue generating and they can get back on their feet again. To then burden themselves with, okay, then I have to, I have to go down this line and offer this to, you know, a waitress in, in, in the restaurant who has no experience in, in cooking. I just don't see how that makes any sense.
It doesn't. Madam Chair?
Mr. Sadio, are you ready there? We were having trouble with you. Are you unmute, did you hit unmute? We need you to unmute yourself, sir. Mr. Sadio, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
And so the answer is you don't have to hire that person. The fact of the matter is that all, all businesses have management rights. Most collective bargaining agreements have provisions for management rights. And that means that the employer has the duty, responsibility, obligation to manage the enterprise. So that's, this is not waived. This is simply talking about a, a provisions which allow people to go back to jobs that they were during before COVID-19. It's nothing more than that. The provision that says, well, maybe they can be trained to do something else is that if there's a same or similar job and there's some element that could require that, it's reasonable and we use the reasonable standard and it's within management rights, then they can go ahead and train that person. You have to realize, we have to realize that the workforce is gonna look different. The workplace is gonna look dramatically different. And so, for example, somebody may be required to test temperatures, right? So a person who was there working for, for the restaurant could now be trained to test temperatures. That doesn't seem to be an infringement of, of management rights that the person should be able to, to think reasonably, I can go back and work for that. I think one thing we have to keep in mind is that we're stretching and working really hard to find the problem and ignoring the solution. And what problem we are trying to solve with this policy. And the policy, the, the policy objective of this proposal was that workers would have a reasonable right to return to jobs if they were back up, if they were created again. That's all that we're trying to do. And we're looking at, it's very specific. The, the president was very clear in tailoring this to specific industries that were likely to have support, that have a lot of resources, that have long histories with labor management relations. While the industries may not have full density, the industries have those experiences. And so, again, you're not gonna have to train a busboy into a chef at Spago's. I would not worry about that. I think it's, it's, it's an overreach. I recognize that, that we live in a very litigious society, but this is not a problem that I think we should be worried about. What we should be worried about is how we ramp up this economy, ramp up this sector of the economy and how we ensure that people who have committed their lives to provide these services, people that are daily routinely referred to as essential, should have this modicum of opportunity to return to the jobs that they had before. That's the policy objective. That's what we should focus on. I don't think the language interferes with that. In fact, I think the language is very clear and unambiguous and provides that opportunity. So I think for that reason, I speak in favor of the position taken by Mr. Corretz and oppose the motion.
Mr. Krikorian? Mr. Krikorian, can you hear me?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I agree wholly with what Mr. Sadio said about, I think, the council's intention. I, I am not as certain that the language that's before us captures that intention. And that's been my concern, particularly the last sentence of that paragraph two-hundred point three-two A that we added since the last meeting. It, it's not a model of clarity. And so I'd, I'd like to make sure I understand what we all are intending to do and what this language reads. Because I, I think it's important, especially when we're imposing potential punitive damages on an employer that misreads and misapplies what we do. And I'm sorry that we were unsuccessful last time in removing that punitive damages provision because I think it should not be in this ordinance. But it puts a tremendous sense of risk on an employer who takes a misstep in rehiring employees based on language that maybe we weren't as clear about as we should have been. So I wanna understand this. As I read this ordinance, and let's set aside the last sentence for a moment. As I read the language, if, and if a new hire requires training, then that, and we could re, and the business could rehire a laid-off worker with the same amount of training that would be required to hire that new worker, then the laid-off worker always gets preference over the new hire, right? Okay.
Absolutely correct.
I agree with that. I think, I think what I've heard is that we all agree with that concept.
That's correct.
But if, what if the new hire doesn't require any training at all? And I take for, let me use, say, a concierge as an example. A concierge is a concierge because of their deep understanding and relationships all over town with other institutions, with restaurants, with theaters and so on, problem-solving ability. It, it's very difficult to train a new concierge to have that position. So if, if a hotel has laid off their concierges and then they have an opportunity to hire a competing hotel's laid-off concierge into that position, they can do that freely without training up a laid-off worker, right? Because that concierge does not require training. Is that true?
I, I, I just, so are you saying that the laid-off concierge staff from the hotel that is rehiring doesn't wanna rehire the same classification but wants to go outside and pick one?
Right. They've already offered the position to their laid-off concierges. None of, none of them have taken that.
Okay.
Can that hotel now, can Hotel A now go and hire Hotel B's laid-off concierge?
Absolutely.
Okay. Absolutely, yes. They can even before training up the desk, Hotel A's desk staff to become a concierge.
Yes, because then the concierge, the concierge from the outside does not need any training to come in and work at the hotel.
Exactly. Okay. So, so I wanna make sure that we all understand that, that that's reflected on the record when the legislative intent of this body is interpreted. I wanna make sure we're clear on that because that, I, I, I'm not gonna try to wordsmith it, but that last sentence of that paragraph, which has been newly added, I think unnecessarily complicates what we've just made clear with this point. So I'm, with that clarification, as long as new hires don't require training, they can be brought in before laid-off workers who would require training.
That is correct. And I just wanna point out that the Office of Wage Standards will prepare rules and regulations and will clarify these issues.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Blumenfeld?
Sorry, just, just wanted to add to Mr. Krikorian's point. The language actually says the same training. So even if you had someone who was a junior concierge at another hotel, but they required some training, since they require less training, not the same training, theoretically, and the city attorney can mention this, they could be hired as well, given first preference because it, it doesn't say they have to have, it, it says to qualify for the position with the same training. And presumably, somebody who has experience would have, would not need the same training as someone who has no experience. I think that's, that's the point.
Thank you.
So that, that's why I support the language as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld. Mr. Lee, to close?
Yeah, I mean, colleagues, I mean, that, the reason why I'm asking for this to be removed is because of that, of what Councilman Krikorian said, just the, the unknown consequences of doing something like this would open up litigation. I mean, people are going to, businesses are gonna have to evolve and they're gonna have to learn its whole new system of retention and recall and, and making sure. There's going to be small mistakes. But when they're focused on hiring a certain position, my worry is that, that they just, they're not given that ability with the same thing. Now, the city attorney with, with, with Councilman Sadio's arguments were that we would be able to go out and, and, City Attorney, everyone is gonna need training. Every, everybody in, in a new position is gonna need training and the same training is going to be supplied. But some people have additional knowledge in those fields. I just wanna make sure that this ordinance is clear, that those hotels have the ability then to hire on, and if City Attorney agrees with this, to hire on someone outside of the laid-off people from Hotel A. If they have some previous additional training in that, that would be fine.
If the worker, if the worker from the outside needs to have training and a worker from the laid-off workforce requires the exact same training, Councilmember Blumenfeld is correct, it has to be the same training, then you would go to the laid-off workers first. But if there's a skill set that that outside worker has that the laid-off workforce does not have, then you're not providing the same training because there's a, there's a qualification that cannot be met by the laid-off workforce.
Yeah, you know, I agree. I just, I just don't think that's very clear in this ordinance.
We will make sure we clarify in the rules and regs when the Office of Wage Standards puts those out.
Right. Then I withdraw my, I withdraw my amendment.
You withdraw your amendment? All right. Thank you. Let's, um, let's go ahead and vote on item twenty-nine. Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Weezer.
Yes.
Corretz.
Yes.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fifteen ayes, this item passes. All right, Madam Clerk, let's move on to the next item. Let's take up item number thirty. There are two members that need to recuse themselves, so let's make sure that they're out of the picture, both Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Price.
Um, I'm recusing myself too.
Oh, okay. Do you wanna, just make sure you're not in the frame, Mr. Rue. So we've, we've got three members who have recused themselves. Let's go ahead and call the roll. Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson. Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Weezer.
Yes.
Corretz.
Yes.
Krikorian recused. Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price recused. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue recused. Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Twelve ayes, this item passes. Madam Clerk, let's move on to item number sixty, called special by Mr. Corretz.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't expect any controversy with this item, but some of the purpose of it is to publicize the issue, so I wanted to speak to it just briefly. During the course of the pandemic, the Trump administration has taken advantage of this to gut virtually all environmental protections and the Environmental Protection Agency with no real connection to the crisis, but just an opportunity to both bail out fossil fuel companies and other polluting entities and at the same time remove all protections to air, water, wildlife, and other protections. And so I am asking that we call upon that administration and Congress to take action to prevent the gutting of all environmental protections. And of course, there have been connections made to air quality and water quality and making individuals more prone to severe symptoms from COVID-19. So there is also a direct connection. So that's the reason for this resolution, and I ask for your ayes.
Okay, let's prepare to vote, members. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Weezer.
Yes.
Corretz.
Corretz, aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fifteen ayes, this item passes. Okay, let's move on to items sixty-nine, seventy-two, and seventy-three. These were all called special by Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. O'Farrell, you wanna start with sixty-nine?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. So I introduced this item, this motion, to make sure that we reach all Angelenos who are in need of this information. And that pretty much includes all renters and all property owners who rent. This'll be one more clear way to convey the necessary information of the rights and the responsibilities of this action that we took back on March twenty-seventh. When we voted unanimously on these protections on March twenty-seventh, my office began working immediately with H-SID, Housing Community Investment Department, on making sure that there was complete clarification for tenants on a very one, very simple one-page form that H-SID published about a week after that. And then we immediately began putting it on all of our social media channels, on the Nextdoor chat across the city, or my district, that is, on our website. We got it on the daily newsletter. We also crafted frequently asked questions in English. Um, we also crafted, uh, frequently asked questions in English and Spanish, uh, because we, we know that in this time of distress, people are just trying to hang on, um, and we want to make it as simple as we possibly can, so that everyone is clear on what these protections, uh, provide, um, to minimize any of these disagreements that we've heard about, um, or these misunderstandings, and then, uh, some landlords who try to take advantage of the situation. But, um, what my team has done is we simply do casework daily on any calls that come in for information, uh, and since H-Sid published this document, the, the, the facts of what, uh, people are instructed to do, uh, in relation to these renter, uh, protections, um, has worked out pretty well since this form, uh, was crafted. So, um, we, uh, I ask for your aye vote, uh, and I think that with, once we get on the same proverbial page, it'll significantly lessen, um, the confusion that's out there, because what this does is it requires H-Sid to send this notice with this clear information about the ordinance that we unanimously supported on, on March 27th. Uh, everyone who rents, and everyone who, uh, rents and owns a building and rents to others, will receive this information through, uh, mail. So this is a really great, uh, I think, way to do this, so that we lessen the confusion that's out there. So that's, that's item 69. Uh, and, uh, Madam President, would you like me to go on to item, uh, 73?
Right, well, let's vote on, um, 69.
Thank you.
Blumenfield?
Hold on for just a second, um, you, we, we're going to vote this as, as amended? Did you, did you provide an amendment for 69, Mr. O'Farrell?
I did not.
Oh, you did not, okay, I misunderstood. So let's go ahead and prepare to vote on 69.
Blumenfield?
Aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Aye.
Harris Dawson?
Harris Dawson, yes.
Weezer?
Yes.
Corretz?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Yes.
Wesson?
Wesson, aye.
Fifteen ayes, this item passes.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, you want to move on to item 72?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and colleagues, uh, this is something that I, I first, again, I want to pay tribute to the leadership of our, our president, uh, and Mr. Wesson, who, um, approved the, uh, Renters Assistance, Rental Assistance Subsidy Program, that, uh, my office is contributing $1 million to, to help renters in the 13th District, uh, specifically, um, because, uh, well, for the obvious reasons, um, but I want to just talk, uh, about this a, a little bit, and that is, due to the COVID-19 emergency, um, and the Rental Assistance Subsidy Program Trust Fund, uh, this trust fund that these monies are going into will be administered by, again, Housing and Community Investment Department. Uh, the $1 million would normally be used for public, uh, work projects in the public right of way, um, uh, from the AB 1290 Fund, from the community redevelopment agencies, which were, uh, just discontinued in 2012. So those monies, we can now help renters with, with a subsidy. This is a grant, this is not something that needs to be paid back after the pandemic eases. Um, we want to help as many renters as we can, uh, and it's specific to some of the, um, you know, small business landlords with four units, um, et cetera, that grant to folks, where their relationships are usually really strong anyway. Um, we want to see this fund grow, so that it can reach beyond the three council districts that are now, uh, covered with these subsidies, um, so that we can help more people, uh, with, with this. Now, this is something that we can do, uh, at the local level, which does not put us in conflict with any state or federal law, while, in the meantime, we lobby for real forgiveness for, for mortgage and rent, uh, in the coming COVID-19 point, uh, 4.0 bill in Congress, which we're working on. Um, and we're in constant conversations with the local delegation, including the Speaker of the House, uh, from the San Francisco area, Ms. Pelosi, on what that relief bill will look like. Uh, and so we're hopeful that that federal relief will be coming as well, but in the meantime, we can act on this. These monies will go toward the balance of rent due, um, and it's, again, it's a subsidy, uh, and it will just help the tenants who are struggling, uh, that much more. So, um, we hope, again, there are more funds coming to this trust fund, uh, because we think that we're on to something. Uh, if H-Sid, if we can figure out a way to grow this, uh, to help more renters across the whole city, and it's just, uh, an immediate action that we can take, and, uh, again, uh, thank you for your leadership, uh, Council President Martinez, and, uh, colleagues, I ask for an aye vote. Thank you.
All right. Do you have any comments regarding item 72? If not, I'm going to go ahead and ask that we vote on both items together.
Yes, 72, absolutely, um, Madam President, one of the, uh, public commenters earlier talked about, well, what are we going to do for LGBT Heritage Month? Now, uh, as an openly gay city council member, um, it's imperative to me that on the 50th anniversary of the very first, uh, LGBT Pride Parade in the United States, which occurred on June 28th, 1970, this is the 50-year celebration, the 50-year anniversary of that, uh, historic event, because in Los Angeles, pioneers like the Reverend Troy Perry and others organized a parade that began in the 13th District at the intersection of McCadden and Hollywood Boulevard. It's a historic location, one of many in the 13th District, that I have the privilege and honor of representing. I want everyone to know that since, uh, virtually all of the Pride events for June are going to be, uh, canceled or postponed, that the, the, uh, plaque that will be manufactured and placed is moving forward. We're hopeful that we can install it and celebrate on June 28th, which is the actual 50-year anniversary. We will, um, know more about that in the coming weeks, in terms of how we can accomplish that based on the pandemic and its consequences, but if not, we will certainly have a big celebration. Um, we need to really recognize, especially in this current pandemic, that the LGBT community knows about pandemics. It was nearly 40 years ago that the very first cases of this gay cancer occurred, and anyone who is my age or older lived for years, thinking that we probably wouldn't make it to our 30th birthday. So I think in this time of the COVID-19 pandemic, when tens of thousands of Americans are dying, when we're all in this very uncertain and, and frightening place and environment, just realize that a whole population of gay men in the early 1980s, through the mid 80s and through the late 80s, uh, before there was ever even a test, an antibody test for HIV, knows what this is like. So I, I just want to, uh, state for the record that this is a community that I'm so privileged and honored to be part of and represent, that on this 50th anniversary, um, we acknowledge that and reflect upon what that means. Um, myself and my entire generation that survived this plague understands that we have to also survive and thrive through the current pandemic. Um, so I just wanted to state that, and for everyone of every age to recognize that the pioneers who risked everything back in the day, um, their jobs, their livelihoods, their family, um, we need to keep their, them and their memory in our minds and in our hearts, because without their sacrifices, I certainly wouldn't be here, many of us wouldn't be here, in the positions that we've been able to attain. And so I want to pay tribute to the pioneers that this plaque will honor, um, on this 50th anniversary. Uh, Madam President, I ask for an aye vote on this as well, and I stand in solidarity with my brothers and sisters, and those who don't claim, um, any gender on this very, very important occasion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on items 72 and 73, please call the roll.
Blumenfield?
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Aye.
Harris Dawson?
Harris Dawson, yes.
Weezer?
Yes.
Corretz?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Yes.
Wesson?
Wesson, aye.
Fifteen ayes, these items pass.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move on to item 75, this was called special by Mr. Blumenfield. Mr. Blumenfield, are you there?
Yes, okay, ready for me. So the reason I called this one special is, I, I very much like the notion of the motion, which is to further protect commercial tenants, but I've got a couple of concerns that I think warrant a little bit of study, a report back before we actually pass this ordinance, and the urgency is not, you know, at the very least, we know commercial tenants have three months after the pandemic is over, so this is not something that's happening immediately. And my concerns are, are thus, one, uh, the number of months that we're, we're expanding the commercial tenants to may be too long, I don't know, for deferral of rent, I'm not sure, and part of it depends upon whether the property owner would be unduly harmed, uh, and whether the, the commercial tenant really needs that length of time. At the end of the day, we want to make sure that both parties may be bowed, but they are not broken. Uh, we want to create a balance that allows our commercial tenants to thrive, but we don't want to put out of business, um, small property owners. And, and there are, the majority of property owners out there are, in the scheme of things, they own one or two properties, um, and they are considered a small business, and if we give their tenants too long, they, some of these folks may go bankrupt. Uh, unlike residential property owners, there's not the federal mortgage, um, deferrals for these commercial property owners, so they're, they're not in the same category. And some of the tenants that we have are not, you know, are not these small businesses, we're talking about Starbucks and Shake Shack, that, um, you know, folks who, you know, billion-dollar corporations that maybe they have one of their, their stores located in a, in a small commercial property owner, so the question of how long we give that, we give that, uh, that Starbucks 12 months to, to repay that, uh, property owner, that could, could potentially cause undue harm. And I, I just want us to make sure that we're, we're really tapping into the right number of months, and we've kind of picked some numbers that seem somewhat arbitrary to me, and I just want us to get the back, background. Also, the timing of the definition, we say that this doesn't have to begin, you don't have to begin repayment of deferred rent until after the pandemic is over, but as we're seeing more and more, it's not going to be so clear-cut, uh, there's going to be most likely phased in, and so some businesses may get phased in, but the pandemic may not be over for another year, technically. So you could have a business that's up and running, and they're, they're, they're not even starting the clock yet on their deferrals. So I just want us to, to be able to probe that a little bit more. And the definition of a small business, uh, in terms of deciding which businesses are capable of paying, I don't know that just tagging it to the 50 employees is the right way to go. I mean, you can think of lots of scenarios, uh, a small jewelry store where you only have a couple of employees, but a very high margin, may very well be able to pay their rent, and, you know, after the deferral period, whereas the restaurant with 51 employees, uh, but is, uh, operating on a very low margin, may not be able to do it. And so I don't know that that number is the right number. Um, again, I want to reiterate, the notion of the motion is one I am totally behind, which is, let's protect our commercial tenants. The details of the motion, I think we need to get a little bit more hard data and background, and we have the time to do it. So all I ask is that we get a report back before we move forward with this, so that we can know the pros and the cons of choosing six months, or 12 months, or 50 employees, uh, because right now, I don't see the justification for those numbers in a, in a rational way, and I'd like us to be as rational as possible, because we are truly, um, you know, people's livelihoods and are at stake here, and we want to make sure we do the right thing. So that's why I'm, I'm, I'm asking that we get a report back before we move forward with this.
Second.
Mr., Mr., um, Blumenfield, I accept a friendly amendment. So we've got a couple of speakers on the queue, Mr. Buscaino?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and I do share, um, similar thoughts than Mr. Blumenfield, and I want to acknowledge and, and recognize one of my property owners, um, in my district, Jacob Eisenberg, who you heard from during public comment, appreciate your insight, uh, Jacob. Um, so I just want to make sure that, um, what we have before us, uh, maybe a question to our city attorney, uh, is he on the line?
Yes, he's here.
So i- i- if, if, reading the motion, if the motion is, um, we move forward on the motion, would it apply to big corporations like, uh, Walmart, or Google, or Apple, or Nike?
Thank you, Madam President, and I do share, um, similar.
Okay, Mr. Michelson, uh, who's, who's responding? Mr. Michelson, are you there?
I am here, but I have nothing to add at this point.
You have nothing to add at this point?
Unless there's a question, I didn't hear one.
Oh, Mr. Buscaino asked a question of you. Mr. Buscaino, can you repeat that?
Yes, if I, if I can, yeah, there's a little bit delay there, uh, David, all, all good. Um, so, uh, the motion before us, if we move forward, would it apply to big corporations like Walmart, Google, or Apple, or Nike?
Uh, that's a great question, um, I believe this underlying ordinance had as a definition for commercial, uh, an exclusion for, um, uh, publicly traded corporations, uh, multinational companies, and companies with more than 500, uh, employees, so that, uh, exclusion would still be in place.
Oh, for Mr. Blumenfield's friendly?
Yes. Very good, um, so, uh, moving forward, I just want to make sure that, uh, we're surgical in, in helping, uh, small businesses and, and, um, property owners, um, and not, uh, large corporations who can clearly fend for themselves, so that would be my concerns moving forward and, and ensuring that, um, you know, we, we, we get the necessary information back, so that, uh, as I've always said, no better anti-crime program than a job, I want to make sure that, uh, folks, uh, once we get beyond this pandemic, people are able to be employed and get back to, uh, back to work quickly. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, next speaker, Mr. Corretz?
Thank you, Madam President, um, and, uh, I, I too would, uh, take this as a friendly amendment, that, um, I initiated this issue, and it was, uh, really exclusively in response to, uh, concerns by, uh, you know, true mom and pop businesses. Um, and, uh, the, the objection was, well, we, we delayed this for three months, then we have to pay back our deferred rent over three months, so in essence, I will limp back into the economy, start up my business, and be paying double the rent for three months, and I'll be out of business. So that's the concern that, uh, that, that this attempts to address, that the repayment of double the rent over the first three months of reopening business, in, in all likelihood would put hundreds, if not thousands, of very small businesses out of business. So, but I'm trying to balance like this, as we all are, so I, I, I'm not looking to, uh, have larger businesses, you know, be a key participant, in fact, if we limited this exclusively to smaller businesses, and we came up with a tighter definition, uh, the 50 employees, I think, would work in a lot of cases, but there are some businesses, as was noted, where they have fewer than 50 employees, and they're perfectly capable of paying back the rent, or not even the, have, having it have been deferred in the first place. it have been deferred in the first place. So, I think if we can define the small business appropriately, it could be either fifty employees or a maximum of three or five million dollars a year in revenue. Those are some of the things we could look at, and look at limiting it to just the small businesses. It was certainly never intended to include the Starbucks of the world, and I believe with the five hundred employees nationally, that would take care of it. But we might not even want to include the middle-sized businesses. We're not trying to put an onerous burden on landlords, any more than we're trying to put an onerous burden on small businesses trying to open. So, I'm happy to have a report back, consider suggestions for what limitations this be under, but I just don't want to see us start up with such high rents for businesses that have been closed for three months, that we wind up inadvertently shutting them all down. Wouldn't be all, that's a misstatement, but shutting down hundreds of them that with a little more generous timeframe, might have been able to recapture some of their business and be able to stay in business.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to you and Councilman Corretz's leadership on bringing this motion up. And I just want to reiterate and agree with what my colleagues have said. I think the original intent of the motion was to help those mom-and-pop small businesses. But, you know, as we saw, like what the feds did with the Paycheck Protection Program, where we saw a lot of these larger corporations, from Shake Shack to the Lakers to Ruth Chris, take advantage of the Paycheck Protection Program, and subsequently they have all returned the money. I think that's the same thing here. We want to make sure, as Councilman Joe Buscaino said, help the small mom-and-pops, not necessarily the big, bigger companies who could actually weather the storm, and some companies who are even posting profits. So, we want to make sure that the support goes to those small mom-and-pops, and I thank you for accepting the friendly motion, Council President and Councilman Corretz, so we could have a little bit more time to actually vet all of these concerns that Councilman Blumenfeld and everyone else has brought up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Mr. O'Farrell?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. And, yes, Mr. Corretz, you mentioned balance, and I can tell that's what you're going for, and that's in everyone's interest, since this is looking like it might result in a report back, or some information back in the form of a, before an ordinance is drafted. I have some specific questions, perhaps it could be included in that report back. Which city department would be handling the casework or managing this? I mean, for example, in housing, it's H-Cid LA. We don't, there's not a department that handles commercial property in that regard. So, that's one question. Another one is, if, once an ordinance, or if an ordinance is adopted, and if a relief agreement has already been put in place between a commercial tenant and the landlord, what would that do to the agreement that's already been in place? Because that's happening as well. I'm hearing from a lot of property owners and a lot of commercial tenants that they're already working on those types of things. And I don't expect an answer now at all from the city attorney. This could just be included in the report. And then, also, in relation to subleases, sometimes there is a master tenant that does subleases. So, what might happen in some sort of an arrangement where there is a master tenant that does subleases to the property owner in a commercial property? That's not uncommon out there, so that's another question. And then, in relation to the number of employees, how does the number of employees encapsulate the financial needs of a business? It seems that any business impacted by the shutdown that's ramping back up would be eligible for this type of relief. And then lastly... Okay. And then lastly, does this apply to any business, or specific to those impacted by COVID-19? Because some won't be affected and are affected in terms of their revenue, and others clearly are. So, this motion doesn't speak to that, so that could be some helpful feedback as well. We would assume that an essential business operating at full capacity, as I mentioned, without any impact to revenue, would not qualify for any deferment. So, perhaps that could be part of the conversation coming back as well. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, members, for this discussion. I wholly support item seventy-five and the intention behind it. I think it's very important that we provide these protections that will help stimulate the recovery of our economy through our small business community. I would just like to offer a couple of additional thoughts to Mr. Blumenfeld's request for the report back. First, I would like the report back to also include the input of the Small Business Commission regarding this. We now have a Small Business Commission, which is intended to consider exactly this sort of thing, so that people with lived experience as business people can actually comment on the things that we're doing and how it impacts them. So, I would ask that that be included in the report back. I also think we should consider, because business tenants are different than residential tenants in this respect, our protections regarding the evictions of residential tenants, unlike almost every other ordinance that's been passed in the entire state of California, requires no proof of inability to pay. We may want to consider, though, on the commercial side, that perhaps businesses should demonstrate some loss of income, inability to pay with evidence. That might be one thing that we might want to consider. There are very micro-businesses that will struggle with that, but over the course of, you know, months, they ought to be able to demonstrate that they have, in fact, suffered real losses that caused rent to be unable to be paid. So, that might be one avenue that we consider in the report back. And then, also, I'd like to suggest to the city attorney that consideration should be given to providing a definition of commercial tenant. What the ordinance does now is defines commercial real property, but it doesn't define tenant. And so, we, that's part of what I think is intended to be done by this agenda item, but a clear definition, and it might be even multiple definitions that fit into multiple categories that we're talking about, but defining the tenant rather than the property is a more direct way to address this. Those are my comments, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Sadio?
Dito, of those concerns, I also want to note that, for us, there's a thought about the small mom-and-pop building owners. For example, our district office at Fifty-Six and Fig, it's owned by, it's a small, it's a building with maybe four tenants, and so obviously, they can count on the city to continue to pay its bills. But the owner, and the owners, they're getting clobbered. They lost the restaurant, they lost the club. I'm not quite sure if the bakery's still operating. We're trying to keep them afloat. And so, we've been checking with the congressman to see if small property owners like them are included, because what we need is a coherency between our policies, both for the commercial side, in terms of small mom-and-pop building owners, and then for those for residential tenants, the small, you know, triplexes, fourplexes, et cetera. And so, I agree that this needs to be looked at in a report back. We should continue working with our colleagues in Congress and try to find a coherency that works on both sides of this with respect to mom-and-pop building owners, so that we have coherency of policy, and that we're able to move our economy forward once we get the opportunity to do so.
All right, Mr. Sadio, thank you. I don't see any other members on the queue, so... Oh, sorry about that. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Madam President. I realized I didn't actually close the loop on those comments, and ask Mr. Blumenfeld if he would accept as a friendly amendment, getting a report back that includes the input of the Small Business Commission, and also consideration of the pros and cons of requiring some evidence of inability to pay rent from commercial tenants.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, I'm gonna, Ms., Madam Clerk, I'm gonna go ahead, let's go ahead and adopt item seventy-five as amended by Mr. Blumenfeld. To get a report back, excuse me, to get a report back from the CLA with consultation with EWDD, the city attorney, and the Small Business Commission. Okay, can we prepare to vote? Please open the roll.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Weisar.
Yes.
Corretz.
Yes.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Yes.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fifteen ayes, this item passes with the friendly amendment.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move on to item seventy-seven. This was called special by Mr. Blumenfeld for an amendment. Before we do that, Mr. Blumenfeld, there are two members that need to recuse themselves on voting on this item. That's Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Price. Just want to make sure they're not on the screenshot. Okay, thank you. Let's go. Mr. Blumenfeld, you want to speak to this?
Sure. And this is a motion to require the residential property owners to provide notice to their tenants about their rights and responsibilities, specifically with the H-Cid drafted form. We've already said before, we want the H-Cid form to go to folks, but this is to deal with the question, some of the issues that were raised in our previous discussion about eviction protection, to deal with those situations in a way that we legally can, specifically if there's unscrupulous landlords, putting pressure on tenants who don't know their rights, making sure that any document that they send them on these issues, notice to quit or eviction, will include the H-Cid language, so that they know their rights in clear and simple terms. And that will hopefully help a lot of tenants who may be in that position where they're being pressured, unduly pressured, but they'll be provided with the right information. And I read the amendment in earlier.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld, for this great motion. I'm hoping you'll accept this as a friendly amendment, that this form could be translated in Spanish. It's a relatively simple form. It should be, it could do it within a very short amount of time, if you would accept that as a friendly amendment, so it could go out in English and Spanish.
Absolutely. I thought within it, there was some, there was requirements about language already, but regardless, I will accept that amendment, because it's absolutely, we should have Spanish, and we should make other languages available. Mr. Michelson wants to comment?
Thank you. Just want to make sure.
Okay.
Okay, there are no other speakers on this item. Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on item seventy-seven as amended. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfeld. Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson, yes.
Weisar.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Krikorian recused. Lee.
Aye.
Martinez. O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price, recused. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Yes.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Thirteen ayes, this item passes with the friendly amendment.
Okay, Madam Clerk, what's next?
Next are the verbal amendments.
Go ahead and read the first one.
The first, the first motion introduced by Councilmember Bonin is to transfer eighty-four thousand of funding designated for improvements in connection with the Great Streets Program for Venice Boulevard to the Board of Public Works' contractual service account for ongoing landscape maintenance and litter abatement on Venice Boulevard. Do we have a seconder?
I will go ahead and second that for Mr. Bonin. I will second that for Mr. Bonin.
Second, second.
We got it. Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. What's the next verbal motion?
The next verbal motion is introduced by Councilmember Harris Dawson to authorize the Bureau of Engineering to approve contracting documents with the Los Angeles Neighborhood Initiative to effectuate the Western Gauge Medium Park Project in Council District Eight and related instructions. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Mr. Bonin, seconds?
The next verbal motion is also a Rule Sixteen, introduced by Councilmember Harris Dawson, to adopt tougher resolution approving the issuance of bonds for construction of a housing project located at sixty-five seventy-six and sixty-six oh four Southwest Boulevard in Council District Eight.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Corretz, second.
The next verbal motion was, is also a Rule Sixteen, introduced by Councilmember Harris Dawson, to amend the prior council action relative to a lien for fourteen thirty-eight West Twenty-Eighth Street to eliminate the late fee charge in the amount of two thousand four hundred and ninety dollars, and the accumulated interest in the amount of two hundred and sixteen dollars. Do we have a seconder?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bonin.
The next verbal motion has been referred to the Rules Committee, introduced by Councilmember Rue, for the City of Los Angeles to include in its twenty nineteen twenty twenty federal legislative program, support for any legislation which would provide additional assistance and support for the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, including the proposed Closing the Meal Gap Act of twenty twenty. Is there a seconder?
Harris Dawson, second.
The next verbal motion has been referred to the Public Works Committee, introduced by Councilmember Rue, to authorize the Bureau of Engineering to issue a revocable permit to close and construct permanent structures within the existing public rights of way of La Meda Street and Peach Avenue in Council District Four. Is there a second?
Second.
The next verbal motion has been referred to the Budget and Finance Committee, introduced by Councilmember Corretz, to instruct the Controller, Bureau of Contract Administration, Board of Public Works, Department of Water and Power, and all other contracting departments to pay any outstanding invoices to local nonprofits in good standing on a fifteen-day timeline for a period of six months. Is there a second?
Second.
Didn't make that happen.
Second.
The final verbal is a commendatory resolution introduced by Councilmember Rue, to, for the City of Los Angeles, to recognize May sixth as National Nurses Day. Is there a second?
Harris Dawson, second.
Thank you, man.
Those are all the verbal motions.
Members, those are all the verbal motions that we have here in council chambers. Are there any other verbal motions that you wish to make at this time? Okay, I don't see any other members on the queue. So, Madam Clerk, what's next?
Madam President, for the record, those motions will be posted and referred. The motions will be posted on the Clerk's website shortly after the meeting for public viewing, and then the desk is clear.
Okay, members, are there any announcements? Okay, CNN, are there any adjourned motions? Okay, CNN, are there any adjourned motions? Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Juanita De Sosa, who passed away recently.
Hold on for just a second, Ms. Rodriguez, we can't hear you. Could you speak a little louder?
Can you hear me?
No.
Okay.
There, it's better.
You can hear me now?
Yep. Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Juanita De Sosa, who passed away recently. She lived in Pacoima for 60 years. She was involved with the San Fernando Valley NAACP. Her husband, Jose De Sosa, was also a very active member of our community. As Secretary of the San Fernando Valley NAACP for more than 14 years and a member of the conference, State Conference of NAACP Secretaries for six years. Sorry, I hear feedback. She was also president of the Pacoima Junior High School, PTA, the assistant director of the Laca Head Start Program. Juanita was instrumental in getting many of her employees for, into four-year, getting them, supporting them with four-year college degrees. Over the past 40 years, Juanita has been recognized by countless organizations for her service to the community. I want to send my condolences to the De Sosa family. May she rest in peace.
Ms. Rodriguez, if I don't, if you don't mind adding me to your adjourned motion, the De Sosas were a powerhouse. And dear friends of me and my husband, and we're very saddened to hear about Juanita's passing, but she was a trailblazer and an amazing, amazing woman and a fighter for the northeast San Fernando Valley. So may she rest in peace. If you please add me to your adjourned motion. Thank you. Mr. Rue?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would also like to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of Ronald Ziff. Ron was a kind, gentle, and deeply intelligent man. Born and raised in Los Angeles, Ron would always help anyone he could. He began working in the family business, Westward Home Markets, at the age of 12. He also excelled academically and attended UCLA, where he met his wife. Ron was very well-known in Council District Four. He was president of the California Beverage Retailers Association, and he was elected president of the PTA and Advisory Council at his son's schools. But I knew him best as a dedicated member of the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, and I was proud to call him a friend. After spending his life working in the grocery business, Ron retired in 2003, spent more time with his grandchildren, and continued serving his community. He was the head of the Land Use Committee on the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, and eventually became vice president and president. Ron could basically tackle any issue that came before him, and he was well-known for his ability to solve problems and to help others. He was instrumental during the Sherman Oaks homeless housing that we fought together for, and unfortunately, over these last few weeks, Ron contracted the coronavirus, along with his wife Ethel, and became very ill with COVID-19. I remember speaking to him just a few days before his passing, and where he was on his 13th day, and he thought the worst of it was behind him, and he was slowly recovering. But even in those final days, he spent more time taking care of his wife, and again, putting him, putting others before himself. Ron is survived by his wife Ethel, his son Richard and, Richard and Ben, their wives Laura and Judy, and his grandchildren, Ilana, Alexander, and Sarah. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Judy.
Mr. Rue, if you could add my name to that adjournment.
Mr. Corretz wants to add his name to the Mr. Rue's adjourned motion.
And I would appreciate it as, as well, Mr. Rue, if you could add me as well. Ron was a great man, kind man, a great community leader, and it's a great loss, definitely, for the South San Fernando Valley.
Add, please add me as well. I got into work with them on a couple of things. It's a, it's a great loss. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Madam President. I apologize if I didn't hear you asking for announcements. I just thought it would, it is important that, you know, today is the 20th, 28th anniversary of the civil unrest here in the City of Los Angeles, and as someone who had parents who lost their businesses and whose lives were forever changed by those days, I think it's important that we, you know, remember this day, the lives that changed, recognize the events that led up, you know, to, you know, to this event, so that we don't repeat these mistakes ever again. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Ms. Rodriguez, if you can hear me, I don't know if you have your handy mask that was gifted to us by Peace Over Violence. I just want to give them a big kudos. Today is Denim Day, and Ms. Rodriguez and I had a press conference this morning, but also just these beautiful denim masks that were gifted to us for, by Peace Over Violence. We've got to continue to stand up for women and victims of domestic violence and sexual assault, so I just want to commend Ms. Rodriguez for our masks, we're matching. These were gifted to us by Peace Over Violence and were made by a supporter of Peace Over Violence. She actually made them out of her own jeans, so I just wanted to say thank you. Mr. Kukorian, you're back on the queue. Did you want to say something?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President. I apologize. If the adjourned motions are, are done, I did have a motion that I thought had already been introduced in, in writing, but apparently the clerk wasn't able to process it in time, so if it would be appropriate, I'd like to read it in now, so that we can get it in today.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. The moving clauses read as fol, as follows. Excuse me. I move that the council instruct the Department of Cultural Affairs, with assistance from the city attorney's office, to develop guidelines for a Council District Two emergency grant using the following parameters. One, eligible organizations include both for-profit and nonprofit live performing arts venues located in Council District Two with under 50 employees, including sole proprietors, independent contractors, and the self-employed. Two, the program will allocate $8,000 individual grants to live performing arts venues that can be used for operating capital in return for a virtual publicly accessible performance, lesson, or workshop, and/or a certain number of free publicly accessible performance, performances, lessons, or workshops upon reopening. I further move that the council approve the reallocation of $200,000 in Council District Two from the art project commitments and associated findings identified in the fiscal year 2019-2020 Arts Development Fee Expenditure Plan and Fee Status Report to the new Council District Two Emergency Grant Program.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and second that for Mr. Kukorian. And it's going to be referred to the appropriate committee as well. Are there any other verbal motions, members? Okay, CNN members, we're scheduled to meet next week on Tuesday and Wednesday remotely, but we are scheduled to meet again Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. Thank you very much, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
... mentioned, overwhelming and seems like an insurmountable task. This center is going to be a gateway of hope, healing, transformation, empowerment, and the beginning of a better tomorrow for many, many people. As has been reiterated today, the fight to end homelessness in Los Angeles is no small task. And I love the Chinese proverb that says, "To get through the hardest journey, we need take only one step at a time, but we must keep stepping." This navigation center is yet another giant step in the right direction, the direction toward ending homelessness in Los Angeles and in CD2. I am so incredibly honored to be a part of it. Thank you for entrusting this beautiful center to Hope of the Valley.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for what you and Ken do every single day with the rest of the team at Hope of the Valley. So one of the challenges that we have here in the San Fernando Valley and throughout Los Angeles in providing housing, providing services for the homeless community, is the fact that we are a very built-out city, and this San Fernando Valley is not the San Fernando Valley that I grew up in, where there were lots of empty lots that you can play in. We are a built city, and so finding space is a perpetual challenge. And I was so pleased that we were able to identify this space, which is owned by the Department of Water and Power, which has been a day labor center in the past and will be again. That building over there is devoted to the day labor center, and they'll be opening up here again, so that our homeless clients who come in here might also be able to provide, get an opportunity to work for that day as well. So it really is a win-win solution. But getting this facility and getting through the process of the Department of Water and Power to be able to utilize this facility has been a tremendous, tremendous challenge. But it really became a, an achievable challenge because of the leadership of the general manager of the Department of Water and Power, Marty Adams, who has really brought a, a change in view to the Department of Water and Power. For years and years, anything that belonged to DWP was pretty much off limits to anybody else. And Marty sees that the DWP is a part of our city, a part of our family, and wants to be a part of the solution as well. So I couldn't be more pleased to thank and recognize the general manager of the Department of Water and Power, Marty Adams.
Well, I didn't quite get the same introduction the mayor got, but it's okay. No, it's really an honor to be here and to represent the department. You know, infrastructure is so critical to the needs of the city, and this is a critical corridor, but between the infrastructure and the air overhead and what's under our feet underground, the water and power infrastructure that really moves Los Angeles, the question is why can we not do more with the land that's sandwiched in between? And so when Mayor Garcia City and Councilman Kukorian said, "What about this spot? What about that spot?" We said, "We really need to think differently about the land that we have and how we can really get the most for the city out of it, as well as provide for our water and power needs." And so it's really been a, a great, a great partnership to get into this, this kind of project and working with Gary and Tony, who actually built this facility and have done a wonderful job. And if you look at the rest of the property we have on both sides, this is a fantastic improvement. And so this actually brings up the neighborhood. So providing facilities like this actually improve the overall area of this part of the city and improve us and what we're doing in our mission to provide for the needs of the city for both water and power. So we're looking for great opportunities in the future to do more projects like this and really make the most use of our land for the public and make sure that, that we're more than just water and power providers, but also help with all the space needs of the city and the open space opportunities. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Marty. Thank you, Marty. Now, the fact that this is DW-